All right. Good morning. I would like to call the January twentieth, twenty twenty four New Albany Plain Local Board of Education special meeting to order. Ms. Jenkins, please call her all. Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. McClellan?
Here.
Ms. Fuller?
Here.
Vice President?
Here.
President Callenhouse? Here. Please stand for the plug of allegiance. And it's sort of, are there any additions or corrections to this morning's agenda?
No, thank you.
With none, may I have a motion and a second to approve today's agenda? Mr. McClellan and Ms. Fuller, Ms. Jenkins, please call her all. Mr. McClellan?
Yes.
Ms. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Vice President Newman?
Yes.
Vice President Callenhouse? Yes, then the motion passes. Next on our agenda is a discussion related to board governance and responsibilities led by Board Counsel Bill Dieter. Do you need a fish here?
There's a mouthful of fish.
Okay.
I don't need one of those, so. The slides. Oh, okay. Do you want, oh, you have to, okay, great. Okay, thank you. Okay, so first of all, thanks for having me come up. It's always nice to come up and swap and speak to you all when we're not under some kind of crisis or something horrible happening. Actually talk without, you know, having to have some problem solving process that we have to go and engage in. So again, thank you for having me come up. I did tell Becky that when I come on a Saturday and if it's less than ten degrees, it's triple the hourly rate. But um, so I prepared a little presentation and it has a lot of slides and by no means do are we going to go over every slide in detail. Some of it, I think, is just going to be some reference material for you. The other thing is I'd prefer this not to be like me presenting to the five of you the whole time. I hope hopefully we can engage in some discussion. So if you have questions, comments, you disagree with something, think something's not quite where what you thought about before, let's just, you know, feel free to speak freely, right? Discuss it. So the whole idea here was just to try to kind of cover. And for those of you, maybe I'm showing my age now, if you're a Letterman fan, like the top ten things, you know, kind of the board members need to know, kind of that's kind of the thought process I put into doing this. So we're going to cover some things like, you know, we're going to just cover some board governance issues, we're going to cover some issues regarding voting, we're going to cover issues regarding ethics, we're going to cover issues regarding open meetings, we're going to cover issues regarding open records, just kind of the things that I think are good. Some of you are, this is going to be not new to you basically, but a refresher is always good in my opinion on some of these things. And things have changed a little bit, they change over time, so. So hopefully let's go ahead and jump right in. I guess I have to use, I'm going to use this up here, but you can follow on here if you want, so. So. So why did you run for the school board? And obviously wanted to, I needed something to do. You heard the pay was really good. The hourly rate was awesome, but there's a lot of different reasons people run for the board, so it's just obviously something to think about as you, you know, as you're doing. There's a lot, lot of different purposes and reasons. We've done, we've got this from some, some different sources, but twenty to thirty-five hours per week as a school board member outside of meetings, you know, that's just a lot of time. I don't think people recognize the investment of time that it takes to be a school board member.
Per month.
Oh, I'm sorry, per month.
Maybe Devon's doing.
Yeah, 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 I'm sorry. I said twenty-five hours a week. Yeah, but I mean, also, I've also been with some of you though, where it has been twenty-five hours a week when certain times are going on, like I eat COVID. It's like some of our meetings were twenty-five hours online sometimes, right? And and again, it doesn't include board, board meetings. So where does our authority come from? The board's authority is based on typically expressed powers in the legislature. So one thing about the Ohio law, we're prolific for generating legislation in the state of Ohio. You know, our legislature meets almost continuously, some states only meet like once every two years, right? If you look at the Higher Advice Code volumes, I mean, it's this massive, we're still in books back in the day, it took up this massive shelf of Higher Advice Code. Chapter thirty-three is by far the largest chapter of all the Higher Advice Code chapters, and chapter thirty-three happens to be the one that governs schools. So we are a, a very popular thing for the legislature to address and deal with. So and then also that authority sometimes is just expressly granted, if it's implied authority to carry out certain things already. So pretty much from in a school's perspective, it's almost, or even just practicing law in the educational arena, it's very statute driven, not as much case law driven, not constitutionally driven, very statute driven, so. Basically, thirty-three thirteen seventeen basically means that as Board of Education, essentially a corporation, you can sue, you can be sued, you can contract, you hire, you can hold property, you can own property. So you have all the same characteristics as, as a corporation under Ohio law. Obviously that you have broad powers, but you can't act contrary to the law. Many times we're dealing with free speech issues, which we're going to bring up a little bit more in general as we move forward. And then typically, if we're acting in ways that would be considered unreasonable or, or abuse of discretion, those are also issues sometimes where we find ourselves outside of the law. Practical side of board management. In general, this is basically in a way trying to say that, that from the perspective of the board, you should be sort of at that ten thousand foot level, kind of direct in where, where the path is and where, where, where we're going. The administration really is going to be dealing with the day-to-day management of the school district. You're most, most of the time you're going to be in that policy arena, kind of pushing policy. And it is, is part of your role as a board member, too, even though you may not be dealing with the day-to-day operations. If you have questions or you're concerned about day-to-day operations, you certainly have the right to ask those questions. And that, like I indicated, your board policy really is how you express your collective will. The unique thing about a Board of Education as opposed to like, let's say, a legislature, you actually have like two different roles. You have this legislation role where you pass resolutions and pass policies and do those things. But the statute also sort of sets up this judicial, quasi judicial capacity. So you actually are identified by statute to hear student suspensions, student expulsion appeals. Actually, it's not the superintendent for suspensions or, or like designate, but you do have the right to designate people to do that, right? Certain hearings on termination cases could potentially go before the board, depending on what your board agreement says. But by statute, if a teacher in the termination process is following statute, they could choose to have a hearing in front of the Board of Education if they desire. They can also choose to have it in front of a referee. So you have this kind of judicial role, role, rule, role as well as a rulemaking role. The last little bullet down there under rulemaking, I think, is also important. Courts, there's quite a bit of case law out there that says when a Board of Education acts and does something, as long as it's a rational basis for doing so, and that it's based on reasonable facts, a board of, a court is not supposed to substitute its judgment for that of a Board of Education. You're supposed to have a lot of freedom in that capacity. Sometimes it's difficult for me to make sure judges understand that that's their role sometimes in cases for them to remember it. But that is essentially the way the abuse of discretion issue should work.
Can you give an example of where that's come up?
Yeah, it's come up in like teacher termination cases sometimes because they're not supposed to substitute their judgment for yours. So you could indicate that X, Y, Z might have happened, you as a board might think that that should be, should represent cause for termination, where a court might say, well, you don't think it represents cause for termination, but they really shouldn't substitute their judgment for that.
Okay.
It's also happened sometimes in student discipline issues. It can sometimes happen on board policies, those kinds of things, it does happen sometimes. Typically, what happens is roughly being candid about it or practical is a lot of times your trial court doesn't have any problems substituting their judgment for your judgment. And then when we appeal it to the Court of Appeals, typically then there's a little more jurisprudence that enters into the process and evaluation reading case law, and then a lot of times they'll come back and say, oh, it is the board's discretion. That's typically where it happens.
Hey, Bill, before you go too much further, I have a couple of things that you mentioned that I just want to, I think it's be good to clarify for everybody. The first thing is we talked about policy versus administrative role. Are you going to get into that a little bit, difference or?
Well, well, yeah, we could dive in a little bit more if you have a question about it, I don't do that.
Not necessarily, not necessarily a specific question, but and really it's for my two friends sitting beside me who haven't been here as long. Just to make sure that there's an understanding of kind of, and maybe they already do understand it, maybe I'm being.
No, no, I think it's good to go over.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm seeing the difference between the board's role in, in creating policy versus superintendent's role and creating administrative.
Yeah, I'm going to give you kind of a little bit of a long answer or some, because I think it helps better understand it, like in an analogy. So if you look at, again, I'm going to age myself, I remember when we were kids and there was that, that the Schoolhouse Rock, remember? How the bill becomes a law, I always think of that when I have this little discussion, but but you know, the way, if you look at the federal government or the state government, what happens is the legislative branch passes a law. Okay, and so I always use the example, you know, Congress said we want clean water. But Congress doesn't know in droughts, specifics of how to get clean water. So then they turn that piece of legislation and they turn it over to an agency, which is, you know, the Environmental Protection Agency. And they develop rules and regulations and enforcement processes and so forth. So Congress's intent of having that clean water is basically executed through an agency's process. Well, it's very similar, I think, and I use that analogy as a Board of Education, because you as a Board of Education might say, we want our curriculum to look like this, but we want our vision of what our district's goals are to be this, and then you pass a resolution or you pass a policy. Typically, you're going to act through policy, which is your way of legislating. And then there's administrative rules which are adopted, so your policy actually has policies and other rules to it. And then that rules are basically through guide the administration actually affecting what your desires or your visions are that you address to your policy. Okay, so a good example could be, let's just take an issue like Title IX policy or an anti-harassment policy. You would identify that, no, we're not going to tolerate harassment involving schools. And then there could be an administrative regulation which would identify very clearly that how a complaint would be handled, how the grievance process is handled, how an investigation would be prepared, what the timelines are for the writing of whatever conclusions or summaries have to be developed. So clearly is, is that, 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 that policy place. And, and I will tell you, um, typically, and this is by no means, you know, probably all guilty of this, of being around this table of this, but typically people that run for Board of Education's typically type A personality individuals. Which means probably all of us at this table are if we took some kind of test, right? So I think sometimes it is, there is that challenge sometimes, I think, for a board member to know like, when am I in that policy world? And when am I into kind of pulling the levers and turning the dials world? And that line isn't always completely obvious, right? It's not like you go, oh, that's the line, like, gee, I think that as a board member, I've been doing this for a long time, it's, it's just that constantly saying kind of cognizant of that, is saying, okay, I need to know when I think I'm jumping out of this world and maybe into that world, right? And always like having that discussion with your administration, but that doesn't mean that you still can't question, right? It's not like you just blindly say, just go do what you want, but you got to kind of work that kind of precarious line between us two. So I think that's what you're referring to when you asked the question, right, like how to, how to do that. So if you feel like you're getting into, I call, you know, pulling the dials and pulling the levers and turning the dials, then probably walking out of that policy world and into that kind of enforcement administrative world. Yeah, 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 you said it, I did.
Well, I think it's, I think it's important because there have been, you know, over the last, I think, over the last couple of years, there have been times where there have been a lot of discussion either as, as the board or individual members about certain things, people, you know, that, that were of interest or desire. And, you know, we did have some of those discussions and, and I think there were times when when it was understood that, hey, maybe this, maybe we're stepping too far into the administrative lane and we need to step this back. Or, hey, this is, our policy is good enough because the administrative code or the administrative rules guidelines already cover some of those things. So it's a, it's a discussion.
Dance a little bit, because sometimes too, I've, in my career, I've seen administrations which have asked you to get into their world too often, right? Like, you know what I mean, that kind of go, it kind of go both ways, right? And, you know, I think a good example of, of where that line got blurred a lot was like during the pandemic. School open, school closed, mask, no mask, how we are going to handle the issue regarding, you know, contact tracing, all that became kind of this. There was a role that the board had, that was a pretty important role to kind of set it, but then there was also a lot of this day-to-day stuff to get it done, and that was something we hadn't done with before, right? And so that was the time, I think, that lines got blurred, you know, just, you know, from recent history and memory, it got blurred a lot easier than that time.
But to your point, John, policy from a governance perspective is meant to be the ten thousand foot view of the overarching umbrella that basically governs the school district. And then the day-to-day in the weeds, operational parts of it to implement that policy with boots on the ground, what does this actually look like at school? How does apply to kids? What are the rules associated specifically to it? To operationalize it is the administrative guideline. So policy always come to the board because that's the governance piece that you're responsible for. The day-to-day administrative guidelines, we can change based upon new information, new events, new procedures on the school campus, something else to happen. Those just get updated behind the scenes that go back to Neola, so we can do those anytime. But the policy itself comes to the board or you basically, because that's your responsibility under the law, to then enact the policy based upon your conversations. And generally, although it's not required, and Bill can tell you that, we normally do two readings. So the first one's to introduce it, to give you time to understand it, and then unpack it, and then ask questions about it, to come back to a second meeting, then for recommendation for adoption. Two readings of a policy is not required by statute, that's generally our practice, unless it's a nine-one-one something, and then it could be one and done. But those are very few and very far between in this district. We generally do two readings.
And Michael, can you talk about like, not every policy has an administrative guideline, so what makes you decide to write an administrative guideline?
Do you want to say something before?
No, you can go first, yeah.
Yeah, so I would go back to, it comes down to the operational structure. Does it need operational definition to implement within the school district? Or is it just an overarching statement that doesn't? So I'll use an example of the value statement. So the value statements incorporated into board policy, you know, we create things to do that work, there's no one guideline that specifically applies just to that. So it's, it's part of multiple things within the school district. It's not just something that stands on its own, that has to have a sentence or two or three or a paragraph or fifteen bullets that says this is how you operationalize that. So there's some policies, it just doesn't make any sense. When you read the policy, it's understood what it is, it doesn't require a list of things that says, here's how we're going to operationalize this within the school district.
Yeah, I think sometimes what I'll say is like, if the policy requires a specific action to be taken or not to be taken, then a lot of times you'll have a guideline to it, otherwise it's more of a generalized statement. I think the majority of them do have a guideline.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of guidelines, but I will tell you, and this goes back to eleven years ago in April, when I came to the school district, our policies were very out of date. I mean, they were awful, just to say it out loud. So we spent time, starting at the very beginning, to then march through the entire policy manual, and it took close to two years to do that. But we went through every single policy. So on our list, as a goal in twenty twenty-four, that Becky and I've talked about, is the same thing with the administrative guidelines. So some of the guidelines get updated automatically because of a policy change or an operational change for something that's happening in the district. But there's older administrative guidelines that just, like, don't get used regularly, that we need to sit down and go back through. So that's on the admin list for twenty twenty-four, is to try to do that same process to start back at the beginning in the administrative guideline world, much like we did with policy, and then march through them to confirm, affirm, change, add, delete, because there could even be some guidelines that are so out of date from the seventies, because that's what we found in the policy world, that they just needed to be rescinded. So we wouldn't rescind the guideline, we would just get rid of it. It would be deleted by the administration or changed. The only time something happens for rescindment is when it's a Board of Education policy. And generally, if there's a rescindment in policy, it's because of something that's happened statutorily by the General Assembly that then makes it null and void, and then we bring it back and say, the law has changed, you can no longer have this policy, and that comes from the attorneys.
And you're, and you use Neola, correct? So I think the important part from the perspective, from a practical standpoint, is in the Ola will do updates, I think they do.
Four updates or three.
And we're actually one of the two law firms that they work with on updating the policy, a couple of other attorneys on my firm work with us. But I do think it's important for you as board members, when those come out, to spend some time with them, right? Because sometimes it's just very perfunctory or ministerial changes, but there is occasionally something that's fairly profound, and there are some times where, if you, if you, if you've ever seen those Neola policies where you have choices to make as a board, you know, there'll be sort of a general statement, and then there'll be like an A, B, or C option, you got to check that option.
And you see those when we go through that. So like, I'll use one for Monday night as an example, so and give you, back to your authority piece that Bill talks about, for what you're allowed to do as a Board of Education. So although Neola makes recommendations from a legal perspective in relationship to policy, it doesn't, you serve your authority as a Board of Education to enact further regulations associated to the policy at the local level, because you are a local controlled state. So you as a Board of Education, as long as you don't knowingly violate the law and the policy, are able to modify the policy to meet the needs of the New Albany Plain Local School District, because that's the authority granted to you under statute. So an example would be, and this is where it kind of blends operational guideline, but at the same time, it needs to be in policy so that the guideline's not in conflict. But van drivers, so eighty-six-fifties on the board agenda for Monday night as a proposed, there's been some updates from the State General Assembly through the General Assembly. And there's some word stuff that changed, but substantively, there's a practice in the school district that's different than what's required by law. So I'll use it as an example to tell you that, because that's what will be the recommendation. A van driver in the state of Ohio is defined as a person that's eighteen years old, can pass an annual physical exam, pass a drug test, and have a valid driver's license. That's the statutory requirement. As a school district, our standard is you will be twenty-one years of age, not eighteen. So we actually changed that in the policy, although it's not required by the state, we choose to have a higher standard because we're not going to hire an eighteen-year-old to drive the van. That's our choice as a school district based upon past practice that we've regulated as administration with recommendation to the board, that we believe there should be a higher standard other than just being eighteen. So although it's legal, we choose to do something different. So in policy, there's a sentence that's added that is not in the Neola document that shows that we expect the person to be twenty-one. But you have that authority at the local level, so you can modify something based upon that, because it's not in violation of the law, you're raising the standard.
And usually, like, Bill, you or Michael will highlight if something is really, like, whoa, this just came down the page. And it's a major shift in thinking or philosophy.
We will also point out, but that ends up, like, there could be something that comes in the Ola policy that may be a choice, but, and so it'll have the parentheses where you can actually make selections because it's permissive under the statute versus it's required under the statute. So if there's a requirement in statute, even if you disagree with it as a Board of Education, you can't strike that sentence, it's a requirement under the law. And there are things at times that honestly that will come that we don't agree with. So we'll put it back in the pipeline through John's, the legislative liaison assigned through the Board of Education. As one of his responsibilities, we'll have those conversations and say, let's go to our state rep, let's go to our senator that has access to the school district, put this in their ear, and then see if we can get it back in the pipeline. We also talk to the state level organizations for VASA for superintendents, OASCO for treasurers, and put it back in their pipeline too, to say, listen, we philosophically and fundamentally disagree with this, and this is why it's bad. So even though it might have been argued during the legislative process, we'll still put it back in the table to see if it can get modified in a future something that happens with the General Assembly. But again, we don't always win that, so you don't have a choice in policy if it's required by law.
There's quite a few, few statutes, both at the state level and the federal level, that in the, in the education arena, that says you, you will create a policy, like the statute actually says, you have to have a policy. That's a little unusual from the perspective of a lot of other types of legislation, but it does require, some of those do require you.
Billy, you want to mention what happens when federal is in conflict with state?
Yeah, so, so if you have a federal law that's in conflict with state law, obviously, first and foremost, in the federal, like, if you look at a hierarchy of laws, your, our, you know, the US Constitution is first and foremost, you can't have anything, the state can't have any law that's in conflict with that. There are sometimes federal laws that are not constitutional, but the federal law will say you have to do this, you don't, you could choose not to. But then you could potentially lose federal funding, and so many, so much of your funding does have a federal component to it. So essentially because of the funding that's attached to federal educational laws, typically they end up, end up having kind of a premier status over anything that we have from the state perspective because of that federal, that money connection. I think I remember if I remember from law school, it's called the inverse commerce clause. But that's, that's how, you know, it's like, it's like the speed limit, right? Why is there a federal speed limit? Because if you want the highway money, you have to, you have to fall in speed limit if they say you want to fall. It's very similar in the world of education as well. Although they, they don't, you know, like, you know, they, they, they jumped in a little bit, like with, when, when a child left behind and some of those things happen, they jump in, they jump in quite a bit in, in a special education arena, but outside of that, they're not as, you know, they stay sort of out of our hair a little bit, besides those areas. There are a couple of things that are very.
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah, absolutely. You, and you mentioned it, but I just want to clarify, an administrative rule does not have to come before the board, you can just wipe it out.
Yes.
Just want to make sure that.
Yeah, yeah, as long as it's consistent with what your policy is, it can't be directly contrary to your policy.
So when you're talking about all your cleanup work, that's not going to have to be, I mean, you can, you can let us know, but.
You're going to get information about it, but it won't come to the board on a Board of Jada.
Yeah.
As a requirement for adoption, because administrative guidelines are purposeful not to be required to go through the board process so that they can be implemented if there's an immediate need within a school district, that's the purpose.
Bill, just to touch on one other thing that you said, so I, I think it's worth expanding a little bit on the separation of our role and the administration's role. Because I got tripped up when I was a new board member in this area, like, a parent comes to me and says, you know, I'm not happy that this dance was canceled, why was it canceled? And so your natural instinct is to go to that principal and say, why did you cancel this dance? And that would just be completely going around, Michael, so, you know, I, I think kind of maybe talking about, and I don't know if you'll touch on this later.
Yeah, I have, I will touch on that too, Chris, but I mean, you know, there's always that, you know, you're, you're in the community, you may have kids in the school, you're interacting with people who are, are interested and they're, they're stakeholders in the Albany schools, and you run into them at the soccer fields and the grocery store, the gas station or whatever, and you're accessible and they're going to ask you questions and they're going to make complaints and that's.
Your instinct is, let me solve this.
Right, right, that's why you get on the board.
Right.
So I do think it is, is important to try to, to maintain that, you know, you're, you're sort of the, you're still that ten thousand foot policymaker. So typically, you know, the best advice that I can give to you in those situations is to, to tell them first to go to the principal. Say, you know, thank you for letting me know, I'll take this into consideration, but you might want to ask Mrs. So-and-so or Mr. So-and-so why that got canceled or why that decision was made, right? Like, have them go back to the source, because you don't want to kind of be doing that end around, because you may or may not have the information you need. And, and I always thought, like, like, the advice I give is to tell the person, look, I'd like you to go to, you know, follow the kind of our procedure, our protocol. I'm, I'm going to remember that we had this conversation. I'm, I'm gonna remember that we had this conversation and if after you've gone through that process, you still feel like you haven't been. Heard or you feel like if you haven't, that the district hasn't dealt with it, then I want you to come back, right? And it's also probably always a good idea too, to sort of maybe. Call one of these three people whose world you think that probably. It, it's involving to let them know, hey, I had a parent come to me. This is what I told him. So they can also do, but I do think you want to let that happen. You know, so I hate to use the word, I think I even have it in here. I call a chain man, but I hate that. Just my military background, but letting that process. Work its way through.
And it's hard because parents will want, want you to jump the process.
It's even harder now with emails or text messages, right? They email you that, right? And I think it's just, you know, having a standard. Sort of response that you've worked on either be verbally or, or through an email to say. Very, very interested in this issue, this process that we follow. You need to go to the principal first and. You know, and if that doesn't work, you can go to the superintendent, the curriculum director, whoever it might be, but that's a, you know. It's really important to follow and let that happen because there's so much of the day to day situation. And again, it's. A lot of times they're not telling you the whole story.
I was just thinking that, like, there's always a whole other side you don't see.
Yeah, you know, as attorneys, we know there's this side of the story. There's this side of the story. And then there's the middle, which is probably the real, you know, the real thing that's happening. So I think it's just very important to kind of find a way to, to handle that. In a way that lets those individuals know that you care about their issue. But that they have to follow, follow up to your process. Cause you also want to say, well, that's not my job. Like, you know, you gotta figure out a way to, to do that. Because ultimately you're elected and they're your constituents and you have an obligation to represent them and serve them, but you gotta make sure it's done the correct way, you know? It's just like if you call your congressman about something, they don't, congressman doesn't, or congresswoman doesn't give all of a. Call whoever that place and say there's a complaint regarding this. So just kind of, kind of follow that. Can we move on? Any other questions? We're gonna cover kind of that stuff a little bit again too. There are some things that very much statutorily are in your, kind of in your arena. Like you can only, only a board can open a building or close a building. You have some supervisory authorities as it relates to these issues by identifying people to do these things. You know, you, you handle the purse strings, the money that gets allocated or not allocated. That's definitely the board of education. Curriculum textbooks, you guys have to approve those. So the board is responsible for, for those issues. Choosing the textbook, adopting all those things, entering into contracts, all that specifically has to be with the board. In fact. An administrator is not able to bind the board legally to a contract. Only way a board of education can be bound to a contract is by the board being presented to the board in an open meeting. Voted on by a majority of the board and then signed by the board president, signed by the board, that, or treasurer. If that doesn't happen under Ohio law, it's not a binding contract. In fact, during my, I've actually used that excuse to get out of con, bad contracts that we've entered into by administrators. Sometimes we're an administrator. Find out it's bad. We're like, oh, we didn't have the authority to enter that. So the contract's not, is void. Okay. And there's a, you know, there's more than other more specific things as well. When it says authority to suspend teacher contracts, that's actually laying people off. That Ohio is really weird. Our layoff procedures, our reduction in force procedures, actually our suspensions of contracts. Has to be at the recommended the superintendent. You have, you adopt procedures like OTEC's policies and those kinds of things. OTEC's, that's a good example, one that you talked about, Michael. OTEC's is the teacher evaluation process. Well, the statute says you have to have a board policy. So we have to have that policy. Now we have a lot of, we have a lot of choices inside that policy. And then there's also regulations on that. And there's even collective bargaining agreement language that deals with that, but you guys have to actually set the policy. You select the superintendent and treasurer is only two people that you hire directly. Right? Everybody else is like, have a recommendation from the superintendent. And you have, you have the ability to provide guidelines for professional development and allow for compensation. Like when you approve someone to go. To some training or something that usually comes to the board for that. You may not delegate an authority that requires the board unless there's, you're, it's allowed by law. So there are times where it says, but this is the board's responsibility, but you may designate someone. Good example of that again would be. Their discipline appeals, right? I don't think you as a board hear any of the expulsion appeals, right? You have a hearing officer appointed for that. For expulsions.
I do the expulsion. If they go through an appeal process, it can't come to the board. It just haven't. So it's permissive under our policy that it could come to the board. Or go to a municipal court.
Okay, um. This is a, an area that. I put five members because that's what you are. There actually is the ability to have seven board members in a board of education. Depends if you're in a city that's large enough. There's very few of them. Actually, seven, some are bigger urban districts too. You only have the authority to act together. So an individual board member doesn't have the ability to bind the board to any capacity. Or, or act on behalf of the board. You may sometimes delegate individual board members to have authority if you do it by, by. There are some boards of education where like an individual board member hears expulsion appeals, one person just, you know, that, that's need a board member to do it. You do have the ability to appoint committees and we're gonna talk about a little bit more about committees again here in a little bit of the future. And then let's talk about the agenda, development of the agenda, because this always becomes an issue and it's. Typically this always becomes an issue about this time of year. When I say this time of year is because new board members take office. And sometimes that whole process of the agenda setting is, is sometimes becomes a little issue, a little bit of an issue. Every board does it a little bit different. You have to kind of decide your protocol and how you do it. Typically agenda items are going to be developed from board meetings in collaboration between whoever the board prep, elective board president is. And the superintendent and treasurer. So typically they'll have a board agenda meeting sometime a week or two before the meeting where they'll discuss the agenda. You as individual board members can request things to be on the agenda, but typically most districts protocol is that those requests would go to the board president. So if you have an item you'd like to have on the agenda, you'd ask the board president to present that at, at that agenda setting. There's nothing in the statute on this. So a lot of it's your protocol or your policy, but. Typically as an individual board member, you couldn't call the superintendent or the treasurer to say, I want this item on the agenda unless the board president approves it. So to, so probably your best practice and my advice is typically call the board president or talk to the board president if you have an item you want to get on the agenda. But there's always that issue. Any questions about that? I don't know. Is that kind of how you all do it, right? And then there's also that issue about adding items to the agenda. So I could be a board member. I could call Debbie and say, I'd like to have this on the agenda. And she could say, no. She could decline my request. Does that mean I wouldn't have the ability to add it to the agenda? No, I still have an, an avenue to do that, but I'd have to do it after meeting. So if you would like to, and sometimes we add items to the agenda because something came up between the agenda setting meeting in the days that we have. The board meeting, like a contract needs to be approved and it's kind of, we gotta get it done right away or something. But the proper procedure to do that is for someone to make a motion at the board meeting to amend the agenda. And then there is a second and a vote for just the authority to open the agenda to be amended. And if that passes, then the actual item that you're adding to the agenda, you make a motion to approve this or not approve this or whatever it is. And then that would have a second and that would be the vote. So it actually takes two votes, one to actually get the authority to amend the agenda. And then the second one to actually do whatever it is that you're doing as a part of that. So I don't know if that's been an issue for you all. I, I, there are sometimes. This time of year, I typically get some questions sometimes on agenda set. Okay, public session. I revise code says all these meetings need to be in public. There needs to be notice meeting, they have to be open to the public and we have to keep minutes. So let's talk a little bit about minutes. Typically the treasurer is responsible for keeping the minutes of a meeting. The Ohio law says his minutes need to be relatively generally specific, right? So if Bill Deeters came to talk about, he was upset about that the lights weren't working in the back of the high school parking lot. You would say Bill Deeters came to the board meeting, spoken public about a problem with the lights in the back parking lot. Now it doesn't have to be verbatim. You don't have to write down the transcript of what I said, but you have to generally indicate the reason why I might've been there, right? If you record your meetings, either video recording or with audio recording. Then those minutes do not have to be as specific. They can be less specific, more general. Because you actually have the, the real McCoy right there. But then if you do that, then you have to maintain those recordings with your minutes, right? We'll talk, well, it's kind of going to it because it's kind of hard to follow this, but let's say the other thing about is committee meetings. Committee meetings, if they're, and we'll talk about that from that perspective. Committees of the board are also public meetings. They also have to have notice and they also have to have minutes. And they also have to be open to the public. What typically becomes cumbersome is what is a committee, right? When is it a board committee and when is it an administrative committee? And clearly if the board creates the committee, it's a board committee. So if the board says we need a finance committee, we need a facilities committee. We need a curriculum committee, then there's no question, right? And please understand that even if the, you do not have a board member serving on that committee, if you create the committee. As a legislative body of the board, it still must be subject to the open meetings act. There are some times where. A committee is created and it doesn't look like a board committee, but statutes and the courts would probably err on the side and say it is. So what I typically say to the administration, if you create a committee because the board has asked you for a recommendation. In other words, I say to the superintendent, I need a recommendation on a facility plan and I'd like to have, we'd like to have it in twelve months. And the superintendent says, well, I'm gonna create a facility committee. So I got this obligation to provide a board recommendation. There have been courts in Ohio that have said, because the board. Asked you for something specific that they wanted information on, that they had to make a decision regarding it. And you create a committee to do that, that is subject to the open meetings act. There are some courts that have said that. So when you get in that kind of situation, typically what I would, what I recommend would be. Your superintendent, your treasurer, whoever it is that's gonna be involved with that to. To call and say, let's work through this a little bit. Cause I, I've had that happen in cases and I've actually had situations where there were no, there was not a single board member on a committee like that. And the, the courts have said it's an open meeting. And it's typically something pretty like, I'd say like high profile. Like facilities typically will jump into that because the public's concerned about that. Sometimes if, if there's some kind of finance thing involved with the public might be concerned about it. So, so just also. Be sort of smart in that process. If it's a really high profile issue. Try and be, you may not want to argue that it's an administrative committee. Now if on. One of the administrators decides they just wanna, they have some decisions that they need to make internally, kind of in that administrative role. And they want some board input on that and they ask one of you to serve on a committee, then even though you have a board member on it, it may not be an open meeting. So that's where I sort of, it's a little dicey. But really it's the purpose of it. Obviously, the other thing about meetings that I, I worry about all the time is sort of the cyber meeting. This goes into a little more, I mean, consider pre-arranged gathering of a majority of you. But there have been times where like you say, well, we didn't meet with the majority, but Debbie met with Paul. I got Paul's input and then Debbie went over to John and said, okay, I'm not gonna meet with you now, but this is what Paul said. And then I've marked, this is what John and Paul said, this is what, you know, and then you've had these. Four individual meetings. Shared everything, got everybody's input. And then you put back to Paul and said, well, Paul, Jennifer thought this, is that okay with you? Okay, yeah, yeah. Okay. And then all of a sudden this meeting happened, which didn't really happen, right? So you have to be careful of that. It's perfectly okay for you all to share information with each other, but it's sort of that collective sharing. So. I typically would tell you that, you know, you wanna. First of all, it's best to try to have probably a majority of your conversations. Like conversations like over the phone, because you're not creating records. If you, if you do email, be really wary of the reply all button. Right? Because I might, John might send an email to Debbie. That he copies the other three of you on, because he wants you to know about it. And then Debbie hits reply all and then is responding to John. And it's okay for you to, to know about it. Because remember, a meeting is a deliberation. So if they have knowledge of it, it's fine. But then once the reply all button's hit and then everybody starts to jump, jump in, then you kind of have this meeting in cyberspace.
That's why you'll see Michael and I, I think Debbie just did it too. We're sending information out to all of you, no group responses.
Even though Bill differentiated that there's sometimes a way for you to share that information, you're not violation. We generally err on the side of caution, even if it's just an informational item. We still put no group responses because we don't want to create. The confusion of, well, when is it permissive and when is it not? The general feedback received from the board. That we've had to date is then we're, we're just gonna act this way. And that's why we put it on everything, including like. I sent you a text message about an unfortunate student event yesterday with the passing of a student. And it's just information and that's all it is, but I don't want you to engage in conversations with each other. Just because then you always have to remember, well, when is it right? When is it wrong? We just take the practice that you're not going to do it as a group, just to err on the side of caution as a district. That's been our practice.
And, and it's become, there's actually. Actually two or three attorneys in the state now. One I can think of specifically that's down in Cincinnati and then there's. Actually a citizen that's up in. The Portage County. Ames is his name, A M E S. They're just going around with boards of educations and township trustees and councils and. Just looking for violations of open meeting act issues and looking for public records issues. And they do that because if they sue and they win, they can get turning speeds. And a lot of times what happens is they, they don't even, they don't even call you. They file a lawsuit. And they say you violated the open meetings act. You, you had, we're gonna go into it later. You had a special meeting and you, and you had this item on the agenda and you did two other things. And, and you, you're caught, right? And they're like, okay, so all you need to do is pass a resolution. Resit, you know, recognizing that you did this incorrectly, do some training and all. By the way, we need eight thousand dollars on turn expenses. And that's how they're making their money. And they don't, they could care less about the content of what they're catching you on. And, and they don't even live in your district. They don't have to. So just be really careful. I wish in, in your board email service, we could eliminate the reply. Because what ends up happening is we end up, you know, we, we have our meeting in cyberspace. We do it. Not only do we do it, but we've got a record that we did it, which is a public record that anybody can access. So, so just be really careful of that.
Well, to your points, I think the safest thing is have a phone call.
Individual phone calls, yeah.
You are allowed to talk to each other. And you're encouraged to do that. But not in a daisy chain. Are you gonna dress daisy chain?
Yeah, well, I just kind of did before. Like you gotta be like, it's fine for you to, it's fine for you as a board president. Let's say you've got some, a decision you need to make. Like when you're gonna have a meeting, make something really simple. We need to have a special meeting. I don't know when we're gonna have it. We're all busy people. I gotta figure this out, right? So it might be best to have someone in the administration call people, but maybe you want to do it yourself. Well, it's okay for you to call each one of those four people. And get their availability.
I feel like I'm the one most at risk. I have to like constantly remember like you can't share what John just said when you call the next person.
Yeah. Now the superintendent can, I can. Treasurer can, I can, you know, anybody else can, you know? That's why sometimes like when we've had like, you know, collective bargaining negotiations and, you know, there'll be two people on the board. That are at, at the table, but we need to get input from others. A lot of times we have me or Becky or Michael make that call. Because you do want to know. If I call Paul, Paul might want to say, well, what did, what does Mark, John or Jen think about this, right? You have a difficulty if you're a board member telling them that, but.
Because you have to approve the contract. So because you're gonna be voting on it, Debbie can't ask those questions. Cause she is a vote. So that can't happen in a majority way because then you are conducting a public.
I mean, the thing that I will do is say, why don't you give Paul a call, right? Instead of it coming from me.
As it relates to the, to open meetings with committees or whatever. It can be an open meeting. It doesn't mean it has to be a, doesn't have to be members of the public that are necessarily members of the meeting. It's just a meeting of whoever's on, whatever the committee is.
Well, the public could come in and, and watch it. There's no, there's no requirement for public participation. Or any of those kind of things. They'd come and watch and you'd have to give notice and you have to have meetings. You have to have minutes. And remember too, you can go into executive session when you're in a committee. So a good example could be, let's say you do have a facilities committee. And part of this decision you need to make is you need to purchase property. Well, the purchase of real estate is a valid reason to go into executive session for very obvious reasons, right? People found out that New Albany was in the market for land, the price of land in your area would all. If people found out that New Albany was in the market for land, the price of land in your area would all go up substantially, right? So let's say you're looking at two or three different parcels and you want, that committee can go into executive session the exact same way your board of education can go into executive session. I think sometimes my experience has been we've kind of lost track. I like, oh, we're, we're in a committee meeting. Okay. Yeah, you can still, you can still use executive session, same, same exact way. You, you probably, a lot of your committees aren't, aren't recorded in any capacity. So whoever is taking minutes, that probably has to be a little more specific. But then again, a lot of times I, committee meetings, you're meeting for a particular purpose. So it's a little bit easier to be specific when you're writing that one out.
Bill, what, what's the penalty? So you have a committee meeting, presumed by intent, Michael creates a committee. You end up finding out that it was probably should have been a board committee and open meetings, no action taken. What's the penalty?
Well, it's $500 fine. Which, that's not the real term. The concern is, is that if, if it's considered to be an obvious violation by court, they'll, they have the right to have attorney's fees. So I'll give you a great, I'll just kind of tell a war story a little bit. This goes back a way. It's probably 15 or 16 years ago, but um, Forest Hills is a school district on the west, on the east side of Cincinnati. And basically it's, it's in a township, right? It's an Anderson Township. They've had two high schools since probably 79, 1980. And it's always been an issue, right? Because they probably are kind of like right in that population, like the tweener population, like they probably have just a little too much for one school and not enough for two. And that fluctuates back and forth. So obviously there's all of those issues about two high schools. It's very expensive for one, right? And, but then again, if you're a student advocate, you would argue that there's lots of really good reasons for having two high schools, more opportunities for kids, blah, 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 blah. But then there's also less opportunities because if you have classes that are kind of like low density, you may not be able to offer and you got to have features travel. So there's all these reasons, right? And they were getting ready. They need, they knew they needed to do a major facility project. And so they were going to have to do like a hundred million dollar bond issue. And the issue came up, are we going to just finally bite the bullet and take down the two high schools and build one? Are we going to maintain two? And it was a very controversial issue in that community. And to this day, it still is, right? And the superintendent, the board said, superintendent, we want a recommendation and we wanted, you know, gave him an eight month period to make the recommendation. He went off and created a committee and he wanted lots of different stakeholders on that committee. He wanted people from that are supporting one high school, two high school. He wanted people who were, there's a large parochial Catholic community in that district. So he wanted those people because even though they may not go to the schools, they might go on a levy. So he put together this really broad committee. Well, not so much now, but 15 years ago. People decided if they liked you or didn't like you personally, whether you were on the one high school or two high school world, right? And so people, it was really hard to get people to come to share and really be honest because they were afraid how they would be judged by their friends and their neighbors. Right? So if your best friend is, believes this way and you believe this way, you didn't necessarily want to have that discussion. It was like, you know, you don't have a Thanksgiving table, you don't have discussions on religion and politics, right? It was kind of like that an issue in that community. So he definitely did not want this to be public. Well, of course, because of such a big issue in the community, if the newspaper wanted to know about it, they wanted to come to the meeting, so they sued. And, and we lost the case. I actually thought we had a pretty good chance of winning. And then judge, but here's the thing, the judge did say it has to be an open meeting. But the judge said it was such a close issue, it wasn't going to award attorney's fees. Okay. So the judge does have the discretion on those issues. But anytime you're in a sunshine law case, the, you know, if you like to gamble, you know how if there's a tie, the house wins, right? If there, if it's a close decision, the judges and the courts are required to find for openness and transparency as opposed to the other way around. So it's a long story, but it kind of gives you an example of when that can become an issue. Because, you know, and, you know, what ended up happening in that situation, superintendent disbanded the committee. Because it was, the whole purpose of it was no longer, it would, it didn't work anymore.
That's an interesting question. At what point does it, at what, what does it just become too cumbersome? And, yeah, I mean, obviously you want to have transparency. Don't get me wrong, right? But is, are there points in time where it's like, we've got to get something done? And yes, it'd be nice to have a bunch of open meetings, but it's a controversial issue or whatever, and it's going to be, it's going to light people up and cause all kinds of stuff. And so let's just not do anything and make, make the decision and move on.
Well, it's interesting you said that because there are some, like, I, I know you have some committees here, right? Right? I represent some clients who have eliminated committees because they just don't have board committees. Now, I mean, you, you could make arguments pro and con to that. I think the committee does allow for a more efficient operation of your government. Because if you have a committee and two of you are on the committee, and let's say it's a finance issue, and you got to make a decision regarding moving some money or making an investment or whatever, and two people can really dive deep in that committee. And then when it comes to the board as a whole, you, you have trust in the people you put on that committee and they give you, you know, the summaries, but all the details. And you're like, okay, well, John and Mark, they know what they're doing. They're on that committee. They've studied this and they support it and I, I trust their opinion and I've, I've dove in enough to, you know, trust but verify what they said and you move on. Whereas opposed if all five of you have to learn the nuts and bolts the first time, it becomes more cumbersome. But there's some, some districts because of controversies in their district or because the board is split three, two, and it's a massive, just said, we're not doing committees. It's not going to do. And you don't have to, they're not required. But that's kind of a decision that you need to make on a, you know, given what you need to do. I think some districts have too many committees. Right? I do think that, my opinion is you probably need some committees for the big rocks that you got to move around the yard. But you don't necessarily need them for every little decision you make. Because there are, there are company and other requirements when you start creating.
Exactly. And I, I guess that's the, that's the point is, I think there's in you're kind of in, in the perspective would be have everything as open as possible and let everybody come in and, and provide an opinion. And that, I mean, practically.
That's why we have a republic in our country and not a democracy, right?
But I, I think it's important because I, I think you want to be, it's always been something that we, we've dealt with here, because this is a community of people who are very engaged. They're very smart people, right? There's, there are people who have a lot they can offer in number of ways.
And they have high expectations.
Yeah, exactly. But I know that this, the hope that this doesn't come out the wrong way, but practically sometimes it's hard to do because then you just, it's a paralysis by analysis, because then it's just, you never get anything done because
Or you can't, you create a solution to problems that don't exist.
Exactly. So, but that's, but that's, I mean, I'm glad you're bringing this up because I think we, I think we want to be as open and transparent with the community as we can. It's just, and inclusive. It's just the, what's the best way to do it? Where people get a chance to have their say, but we still get things done without it being too much.
I think it's a balancing task, right? And it's also a kind of like using a little bit of common sense is to say, what are those big rocks or what are those big items that our community is really interested in? And on those, maybe sometimes you err on the side of transparency more than you might want to, just because you know they're such big issues. But some of the day-to-day stuff that even though there might be a few people interested in that, it's, there's just not enough density for us to hold things up. And that's a tough decision to make sometimes. And if you're, if it's one of those issues where you don't have that input and you're one of those few people who are really interested, and you're going to be upset, you're going to feel disenfranchised, but I don't know how you keep everybody happy.
I think it's a, John, where you went and where Bill just reinforced, I, I think it's just important to remember. Not everything has to have a committee to your point. However, you still have the responsibility as an elected official called a board of education member to engage obviously your public and the constituents within our community. And you do that on a regular basis, just in conversation. So you, doesn't relinquish your right to ask someone in the community a question. Just to basically hear their insight or feedback. It doesn't have to go through a committee. Because the caution I would give you, and it's where Bill just went, is this might be a passionate issue for 10 people that have contacted you. Your responsibility is to 5,060 students in the school district and nearly 11,000 parents. So although 10 people may be very passionate about something, it doesn't necessarily mean it's going to result in a committee or board action because there's a bigger picture that you also have a responsibility in a day-to-day to basically keep as part of the overarching scope with the school district. Because there's a lot of one-off things that come to us. I mean, that someone will ask for, why aren't we doing this? And it may not be a bad idea and it may lead to conversations about something that we can discuss to figure out, could we do it a different way? Is there a better way to communicate it? Is there something else we can improve upon? I think all that's good, but it doesn't result in necessarily that you're going to then go change a policy because two people came to you and said something. That makes sense?
Yeah, no, absolutely. And that's, I mean, that's why I guess they pay the big bucks to be on the board. Can I just finish this one part? Let's finish this. Like, there's one thing I did want to, the notice, I mean, you know, you got to do notice. And typically if you're doing a regular meeting at your organizational meeting, you publish all your board meetings for the year and that's notice and you get that paper. There is something I want to point out because there's a little anomaly in the statute. So if you look at the special meetings provisions of the Open Meeting Act, to have a special meeting, you need 24 hours notice. So your 24 hours notice is your notice to the public, but there is a provision in the Ohio revised code for boards of education that you as board members have to have 48 hours notice before you can be compelled to come to a board meeting. That's a special meeting. So this gets thrown around a lot as a 24, if it's 48, well, it's both. It's 24 for the public, it's 48 for you. Most treasurers just don't want to get in that world. So they just say it's 48 all the time. All right? But if you really needed to have a meeting and you're like, well, I don't know if I can get that out to the public because I'm not in the office today, but as long as you have 48 hours. Now, if there's 48 hours notice and the board member, board president calls a meeting, you're compelled to be there. You can't say, I can't be there. Typically, you try to schedule when everybody's available. If there is not 48 hours notice, but you show up, you have waived the 48 hour requirement. Okay?
Is a special meeting the same as an emergency meeting?
Basically, yes.
Okay. What's the implication though, Bill? If somebody, a board member didn't get 48 hours notice, so they don't show up and, and something
They could claim that the meeting's not a valid meeting. Yeah. And again, a lot of times when I have really split boards that are split really strongly on ideologies and stuff, that kind of is, that's kind of stuck.
So if there's a special meeting, it has 48 hour notice, they have to come.
Or they have to be excused.
Okay. So it could still be a meeting, even if someone can't.
Right, right.
And is it just the board president that is the person that can excuse them?
No, they have to, they usually will vote, like, you know, so what you really should do is, you really should, anytime a member's not here at a meeting, someone should make a motion to excuse the person who's not here. Because the other thing is, you should do it, right? Because there actually is a provision in the statute that if you don't come to a meeting for 90 days, you could be thrown off the board. So typically I think it's good if you know, like, you know, John's out of town for work and you're having a meeting, someone should make a motion to say, I want to excuse John, right? Okay. And just kind of a little aside to that too, you can't, you know, after we were able to do those virtual meetings during COVID, like if we know, we spent lots and lots of hours together during COVID on that. That's no longer available. You could, you can attend a meeting virtual if you're not there. You just don't get credit for attendance and you can't vote.
That would still count as your, like, if they weren't towards the 90 days.
That would count. Yeah, yeah. But you know, like, if you're like, hey, look, I can't, I can't be there. I'm out of work, but I'm very interested and I want to participate. You can participate, you can speak, you can do all that stuff virtually. You're just not considered an attendance and you can't vote.
You know, it's interesting. I know you want to take a break, but the the excuse of a member, which kind of makes sense. I mean, I know you know, legislatures and Congress always have someone at the end of each session that, you know, asks for any members to be excused. Is that something that should just be part of the standard, you know, agenda, like the basic agenda, or is it something that?
What if they didn't want to excuse you? What if they didn't get a valid reason?
Well, someone maybe get you have to ask the chair or, or you, you know, ask me this, and if they don't, then they don't vote for it. But I'm just wondering, is it something that should be kind of on a?
Yeah, maybe, maybe it'd be good to have it.
Public participation, it's always on the agenda. Should that just be something that's always there so we don't?
Well, you might be able to do like a little asterisk, like, like if I'm looking at your agenda, like where you do the roll call, you could put me a little asterisk and it might want to say, excuse any members not in attendance, question mark or something, just to remind you. It might not be a bad idea. It's not going to be an agenda item, but it could be a no.
I mean, I know it's a minor thing, but it's, it's interesting that you bring that up. I, I actually never thought about that. Typically because we
So I, I can, I think in 30, this is like, this is my 31st year, I've, I've had two different times where the board had to act that, enact that because I had someone that's been ill. And not, and not kind of in denial of their medical condition, just can't get to board meetings and it's, you know, 90 plus days and at some point, although you don't want to do that, you know, when you run for the board, you have an obligation to your constituents that you participate. And after a certain period of time, you may have to take action. So what actually happens is you pass a resolution and basically declare the vacancy for the person being gone for 90 days and then you vote to appoint a new person. Yeah. Both times we, we, we never had to actually pass it. Once we kind of wrote the resolution and put it on the agenda, the person finally, you know, acquiesced, but it does happen sometimes.
I think it's rare.
Yeah, it's very rare. Okay, this would be a good time to, because I don't really need to go over this record or regular special we already did. So then we'll come back and talk about executive session.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, we're in recess.
Expressions are at this hall on this side. Men's are on the other side over here.
We've had good discussions, so it's good. You have to call us back in. Did you do that already? So you have the right to go into executive session. I think most of you know that there's some very specific reasons in the statute that you can go in for. And it's actually one on here that I don't know if I actually have put in there, which I think is the reason you're going in to later today, maybe. But there is a, there was an addition to this that this slide needs to be updated, where you can go in to discuss specific economic opportunities when you've been approached by municipalities or townships regarding economic opportunities and, and property development. But these are the reasons why. I think the, the most important thing I can tell you about this is that even though you have these abilities to go in there, be there, like, this kind of, kind of overlaps with the issue regarding the daisy chain meetings and the cyber meetings. If you as a board of education are making some pretty big decisions or profound decisions and there's not a lot of discussion about them, the people are going to start to get suspicious that you're having a lot of outside meetings that aren't really happening, right? So, you know, it, it doesn't mean that necessarily that you might not have had some discussion or got input. But I do think it's, it's pretty, pretty good advice to, like, when you're making decisions like that, to have some discussions. And even though maybe you've already told a couple of board members what your issue is, for the sake of transparency for your public, reiterate that or repeat it in your discussion here when you're in public. Because if you don't, because of what I've seen districts get in trouble in is that if, if I go to a board meeting and I see big issues kind of hit the agenda and it, yes, 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 yes. And nobody asks a question or nobody has a discussion, then I pretty much know that there's something going on behind the scenes because as humans, we're not always that agreeable about everything. Okay. So I'm not saying that you do that or don't do that. I, I think in the past, when I've been at your meetings, you're, there's a lot of robust discussion and a lot of, but, but try to maintain that. When you go into executive session, you do have to vote to go in. So it's just like any other resolution, there has to be a motion, there has to be a second, and there has to be a majority vote. You are not allowed to vote in executive session when, once you get there. You're allowed to discuss things. You're allowed to give your opinion. So a lot of times if I go into executive session with you, and let's say we're trying to, we have a lawsuit or we have a decision about buying a piece of property, you can't vote to do it, but you, you are going to potentially have to give like what you're feeling about something. So it might be that I, if I was, let's say we had a piece of litigation and we were thinking about resolving it and there was a, a resolution or proposal to settle it. At some point I might say, Mark, what do you think? Jim, what do you think? Jennifer, what do you think? And I, and actually I want to get each one of your opinions. It's not a vote. It's not binding, but ultimately your superintendent, your treasurer, your assistant superintendent, me may have to take some action based on what you guys' opinion is or was. And so there is that ability to do that. So, but you can't, you can't vote. Okay?
You don't vote to come out of executive session?
No, because you're not allowed to vote, right? So you just declare yourself out. That's one of those board president things. It's just declare yourself out. Yeah, that's I've, I've been a lot of meetings where boards have tried to vote, they come out. So there are some things about the confidentiality of it, and I kind of call this is like my Dutch uncle talk, right? Like, you, you really have, you really should protect the sanctity and the integrity and the, and the fidelity of what you talk about in executive session. protect the sanctity and the integrity and the inf- and the fidelity of what you talk about in executive session. It's probably one of the areas, just in general, that I've noticed in working with boards for as long as I've had, that were horrible.
Yeah.
Horrible. Um, because it's kinda like, well, don't tell anybody, but, well, that's pretty much you've told the world when you say that to somebody, right? You know, I'll never forget, I was bargaining at a district in Warren County, it was early in my career, and, um, and we just got to this point where we could not get, you know, we couldn't get the teacher's degree, we're in mediation, things were getting nasty. And the board had, um, we had like three and a half percent on the table for three years, right? Which is at any time, at any time of our history, that's a very solid deal, right? And it was getting nasty and the pitchforks were coming out and, and I went to the O A rep kinda over at the side and I was like, hey, like, you know, Marla, what's going on? She's like, we know the board has authority to go for, we know you can go for. And she was right. Cause we talked about in executive session. We can go for if we have to, but we really need, we really need to be at three and a half, and three and a half was a solid deal. And it was beating everybody in the market at the time, with somebody on the board talking to somebody. So guess what we saw that contract for? You know, and I've seen it happen on property sales, and so, you know, really, really pay attention to it, you know, um. People say, well, what can you do to somebody who does it? Well, you know, uh, you can ridicule them, you can censor them, you can embarrass them. But there really isn't much, like, there's theoretically the ability to prosecute somebody if the decision they make somehow economically, um, impacts the board in a negative way, but I've never seen it. But just really try, and so, and I mean, like, your spouse, your, your, your siblings, your kids, just really try to, the, 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 the more, the better you do with that. The, the more enjoyable your time on the board of education will be.
Or trust you build.
Yeah, right, absolutely with each other, right?
You know what's funny, too, is like, eh, we had the, uh, so many virtual meetings during COVID. And we're all at home, and you, you even have to be aware that your kids can hear what you're talking about.
Great point.
Cause like, some things I heard through, you know, kids coming back, and I was like, oh geez. We gotta really be careful that the kid in the next room isn't on the, you know
Excellent point, because we did have a lot of meetings in executive sessions during that time, and they were virtual. And, you know, someone, if you weren't paying attention to who was near your computer when that happened, yeah, absolutely.
Or even just phone calls you're on at home, just being cognizant, kids, kids don't know what's confidential and what isn't.
So theoretically, when somehow, the only people you can discuss, what was discussed about in the board of education, uh, uh, executive session, are the people who are in that executive session.
Are any, uh, discussions or, um, notes based on discussions or like official records, are they discoverable?
Well, um, another great question. So you do have to take minutes of an executive session. But, but Becky's minutes will basically say, went into executive session, these people were present, and we, we went in at this time and we got out this time, that's all her minutes have to say. Let's just talk about notes in general, because we're gonna talk about public records here in a minute, but your individual personal notes are not public records. Provided that you don't share them with anybody. So if you take notes and then you say, hey, I was at this thing, I took this notes and you distribute them to the board, then you've just created a record by your distribution of them. But your individual notes are not. Now, you ask if they're discoverable, that's a different question. Discoverable would mean pursuant to subpoena and a litigation. Individual notes are su- are subject to subpoena. But you're not subject to keep them. So you can't, if you know there's litigation, you already have the notes, you can't turn around and destroy the notes, cause litigation's pending, cause that's spoliation of evidence. But if not, if there's no litigation, there's no controversy, and you've taken notes just because you wanna remember something. I can't tell you that it's a, I'm not gonna hate you for saying, I don't want these notes around anymore and I'm gonna destroy them, because I don't want them to become discoverable later and I don't have any obligation to keep them. It's gotta be, gotta be, you know. You know, I, there was one board member at a district I worked, she was on the board for like twenty four years, and she had like six file cabinets of everything she ever had. You know, um, so, you know. Um, but, but again, like, a lot of people take notes electronically now, you know, and so it's really easy to keep that stuff forever. So you wanna think about that, cause they are discoverable if there's litigation later. Right? Their notes are, I can't protect them unless there's an attorney-client privilege, which a lot of times on your own individual notes, unless I told you to take notes, I probably can't protect them.
So you mentioned, um, attendees at executive session and the documentation through the minutes of it. So can you just mention, like, who's allowed to go to executive session and how does that happen?
Well, whoever the board invites, that's my point, yeah. So if you want somebody to be in executive session, um, you can invite them. Now, typically, a lot of times the board president just invites somebody and everybody acquiesces, but you might have a difference of opinion. A board member, president might want someone in executive session, you might not, then you're gonna have to vote on who's allowed to be there, right?
So back to the committee example that Bill used earlier. If the committee would go into executive session to look at real estate parcels as an example. You would be inviting the committee into executive session, and Becky's minutes would illustrate that that's who was in executive session. So you can invite anyone as long as the majority of the board supports it. But to Bill's point, if someone on the board or majority of the board didn't want someone in executive session. You would vote to basically pro- prohibit that from happening, so it would require that.
Um, one thing that sometimes comes up, you know, like, saying executive session, there's material, let's distribute it. Um, even though our discussion is protected, the material may not be unless it comes under some others, some other type of exception. Okay, so a great example of that is collective bargaining. Collective bargaining, um, if we, if we're discussing collective bargaining, whether we're actually doing the bargaining itself, or I, we're here talking about it as a group. Those, those, uh, those meetings are executive in nature and there's, in quiet, but if you had proposals that you were looking at, those proposals could potentially be public records still.
Even if they give them back?
Even if they give them back. Um, I had a district one time, also Warren County, but the different district, um, where there was, um, you know, was it a very, very tumultuous negotiations? And the board required after every negotiation session to post our proposals and their proposals online. Demanded the superintendent do that. Yeah, and the first team union was like, you can't do that, it's, it's, it's public record. They actually went to serve and tried to argue that it was unfair bargaining, serve had to say, no, the public record.
So if you're a committee and you go into executive session, who votes to, but that, the members of the committee?
The members of the committee, yeah, mm-hmm, yeah, so, right, so if the committee has members, it's just like you would vote on anything else, right? That's a good question, too, because you might have, sometimes people come to your committee, aren't members of the committee, that is there to provide information, they wouldn't vote. Great question.
Bill, if, if, let's say we're prepping for negotiations, if Becky presented something to us but didn't distribute it, would that be discoverable?
Yes, yes. Right, I, for some, I mean, I know it's a public meeting, I should be careful what I say, but typically, we just don't get a lot of requests for it, you know? Um, now, there's ways that we might go to protect it, cause I could maybe try to protect under attorney-client privilege, cause it might be my work product. Um, and I could protect it until such time that there was actually a thing, but, yeah, I mean, um, if we start getting public record requests during negotiation time, it's just really good for, and I know Michael and Laurie and Becky would. That they would call me and we would figure out how we were gonna deal with it. So there are ways we could probably ensure that it doesn't become public. But we have to make sure we do it correctly. Be mindful, too, and I know Becky's really good at this with you, but you can't just go say, we're going into executive session for personal reasons. You have that, and so I typically say is, um, I don't know if you do this, but, uh, like, anytime you go on executive session, I would just paraphrase the five or six reasons and put a little check in, you could check, check.
I don't do the whole reason, I just list the ones that
The, um, it's really important to limit your discussion to what you're in executive session for, sometimes it's easy to go down other rabbit holes. Try not to, um, knowing Michael, the way he is, he'd probably remind you when you Somebody will, um. There are sometimes you discuss things in executive session that are reason for going to executive session, but they may not be confidential. And it's okay then, as long as you've set an executive session, or just, you know, maybe there's some things that are, are open to the public. You could, you could theoretically share that with people, cause it wasn't identified as confidential. I tell you that because I don't want someone else to tell you differently, although I don't recommend it. If you're in executive session and what you talk about in executive session, you should just keep, keep an executive session. It's already in the public domain, then, then let it be in the public domain. Any questions on executive session? Again, just remindful is that, um, if you, the other thing I think sometimes that, that doesn't, doesn't look good. Is you ha- you have to make a big decision, you have this huge discussion in executive session about it, and you come out and just vote. Probably should be
Some explanation.
Some explanation.
Yeah.
Hey, we're doing this and we're doing this, and this is what we consider and so forth and so on, and, you know what I mean? Like, uh, you're not necessarily gonna disclose everything you talk about in executive session, but if it's a big matter and you gotta take action related to it. Sometimes it's a good idea, if you know it's something that the public's very concerned about, provide some information to them before you vote. I think it's just good governance. Any questions? Okay, so before we get off the Open Meetings Act, if there is the state auditor. You can type it in right now, and I recommend you download it right on your computer and keep it on there. Has something called the Sunshine Law Manual. Comes out every year, twenty twenty four is not out yet, but you can download it right off the auditor's website, keep it on your computer. It may be one of the best publications that I've ever seen from the state of Ohio. It's an amazing book, it has the statutes in it, it, it has, and it, it's written for a layperson to use. And it's also an amazing resource for an attorney that represents and works in this area, because it's got tons of case law references. It's an amazing book. I download it every year, when I hear it comes out, I download it and put it in my computer.
Probably towards the end of the month, but it's not out yet.
Yeah, it's not out.
Bill, before you leave public meetings, can you just address, um, board members at community events, um, and what's permissive and
Oh, yeah, good question. You're not, it just goes back to the definition of a meeting. So if you all five show up at, at, cause you wanna hear a speaker, you're not deliberating, right? Um, so the only time it's a meeting is when you're deliberating, you're doing board business. So just the fact that you're all in the same place is not a problem, okay? Um, just remember, if you're all in the same place, don't deliberate.
Yeah, yeah.
So great examples of those things are Friday Night Lights, you show up at football, there's three board members there, it's not a problem. Um, graduation, yeah. Yeah, you can actually talk to each other, you can talk to each other, it's fine, but like, well, I'm gonna use that as a example that is in violation. So let's just say all five of you show up at Friday Night Lights and it's a football game. And Debbie decides that she wants to have a mini powwow, she corrals the five of you. Debbie corrals you and says, hey, come over here, I just wanna talk to you for sixty seconds kinda thing, and it becomes a five-minute conversation. Ah, Dar, you are conducting board business because you are talking about something that you're deliberating. Or she's giving you information that leads to Jen says X, John says Y, Mark says Z, that's deliberation, that's a violation. But you are allowed to go to the Taste of New Albany, you're allowed to go to Founder's Day, you're allowed to go to graduation, you're allowed to go to community event. You can show up at the choir concert and have all five of you in the audience, it's fine, you just don't do a pep rally together as a five, that's not allowed.
It doesn't have to come up, like, in a district running a levy, to be a levy committee meeting, and all five board members wanna be there.
The danger's the convenience, because you're together, you naturally wanna say, hey, what'd you think about? You can't do that. It's the discipline piece of it, you just have to hold yourself accountable that we're not going to do that. But you're allowed to be with each other, that's okay.
Um, I don't know if we really gotta say too much about this, obviously you act, no, go ahead.
I'm gonna go back to the Sunshine Law thing, just so you know, you all have a pointed need to be the person that gets to go to the training that is, you have to have, once per term. So I've gone to a lot of them.
Thank you, Becky.
I'm just letting you know that, but you should feel free to go if you so choose.
Yeah, I'm surprised it's not online.
Um, sometimes you can find it online, three hours and fifteen minutes.
So just, just, because of the pandemic, they've finally allowed us as attorneys to get all our continuing legal education online. Cause before you were only allowed to have like, I don't know, eight hours or something, it's the best thing in the world.
And I just sent you all a link to the twenty point three.
So obviously you vote, but you, you have to, you, you know, you have to vote, right, um, to do things now. There are some times when a majority vote is sufficient, and there are some times where you need certain majorities. I think we passed out to you something that's really hard to read without your, um, without a magnifier, um, but it's also, yes, but that, I, I tried to just identify that there are times when you do need majority votes. Or there are times when you can only vote, basically, so you couldn't vote to non-renew a teacher without superintendent's recommendation. Even if all five of you do not want this teacher back, the superintendent doesn't make a recommendation, you can't non-renew the teacher. You can't hire someone without a superintendent's recommendation, right? So you may wanna hire somebody, if superintendent doesn't wanna hire the person, you can't hire them. So there are different, there are some rules here and there about certain things. But in the, they're in there, you know, you know, if you wanna fall asleep later tonight, maybe, but but
Four votes to remove the treasurer?
Yeah, that's right. Do you need a superintendent's recommendation for that?
I will tell you that, that's not my original work, I stole it from OSBA. So there's also a fact sheet, if you're really interested and you wanna go into more detail on it. Ohio School Board Association has a fact sheet that's online about voting, and that's in the back of it, and I just, I stole it right from it. Cause like, right, we, we create the wheel, so, um, sometimes issues come up on abstaining. You know, if you, if you need a majority vote to do something, and, and, and you're only, you get, if someone abstains, that's not part of the majority. So, you know, you gotta have, you gotta have three, if all five of you are there, and you're, you know, and three or four of you are there, because you gotta have that majority of whoever's there.
What happens when, um, so like, is it the resolution to proceed that you have to have a super majority, so two firsts? If only four board members show up, does three get it passed?
Uh, it depends on the statute, cause sometimes it'll say majority of those are in attendance, or it'll say three quarters of the, of the majority of the board, yeah. That last, I don't want you to misunderstand that last bullet, because if you, if you abstain, you're acquiescing to what happens, but you're not voting for it. So if it requires a majority, I don't have a majority, I mean, I, I've, I just recently had a board that was split down the middle, two, two, and they couldn't agree on appointing a vacancy on the board. Couldn't do it. So the court had to appoint a vacancy.
Yeah, well, I think that's important, though, so, like, if you have a responsibility to where Bill just went. If you don't act under the statute, cause it is your responsibility, there is a court procedure that follows that to then take action, because you failed to act.
Yeah. So, and the board vacancy is a particular statute, if you don't make, take action within thirty, within thirty days, and that ten and twen- thirty, or twenty to thirty day window. There're not ten day period, then the probate court points. So, yeah, so you're better off, like, coming to a compromise if that ever happens, cause you'd rather have the person that you compromised on, than the judge can just pick anybody out of the blue. Okay, this comes up quite a bit, um. There is nothing in the law that says you have to allow public participation in a board of Yeah, there's nothing in the law that says you're required to. Most boards do to some extent, okay? I'm gonna cover a bunch of slides here and I'll go back and make sure I covered everything. Once you create that public forum, then you cannot regulate what comes before you based on its content. First Amendment, right? So I don't have to allow public comment, like, you're not allowing it today, it's a board meeting. You know, some, some districts will have two meetings a month, and all, one's an open, a public meeting and one's a work session, they only allow comment at one of their meetings. Like, there's all different ways they can do it. Um, I've seen some districts not allowed at their meeting, but they open up prior to the meeting and they have a half hour period before the board meeting starts, people come address the board. Okay, I'll be a little bit careful about that, because then you just can just listen, you can't deliberate while that happens, but I've seen some people do that.
Is that considered a board meeting?
No. Board meeting doesn't happen until then, I just make sure people know, yeah, yeah. So, so once you create that forum, then you do have certain things, and you can have, go ahead.
Sorry. So, the half hour prior to a board meeting. Even if all five members are present, is not a board meeting?
Yeah, you just have to listen, you can't deliberate and talk.
As long as we're not engaging.
Okay, so as long as we're not engaging in board business or engaging with the, with the members of the
I think if you engage with members of the public, it's gonna be considered board business, you just have to sit and listen.
Okay, okay. So, we've got a community listening session coming up, when is that, Mark? Next week?
Yeah.
Right, so they've done one, we're We're gonna do one and we.
The two of you.
The two of us. And we've been doing it as two. For the purp- for the purposes of.
Not creating.
Not wanting to, you know, have a. You know, here's a board meeting.
Yeah.
Um. Uh, although I did have someone reach out to me and say that they weren't, that they didn't think that in that situation. More than two of us in a room would constitute a board meeting, but you're saying it would if we were engaging back and forth.
Well, what I'm saying is that I I don't know the answer to that, but I would be conservative in my advice to you because of that language in the statute that says that if it's a push. It's gonna be considered an open meeting. So if I know if just two of you are there and you're, you know, now, you know, and. If someone is really, really an advocate for transparency and openness, they might even argue that the two of you being there as a committee meeting, it has to be open and public and noticed. Because the board decided they were gonna have listening sessions.
Which it is, it's been noticed.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, we noticed that.
Good, um, yeah. Yeah, but you know, but like let's say the two of you, like the two of you could be there. And let's say Jen Jennifer wants to just watch and observe what happens. She could sit in the back of the room and observe what happens and it wouldn't have any problems.
But if she engages, that's why we've cautioned to say. It will give the appearance that if three of you are present, it's a majority of the board, therefore is it really a committee? Should there be minutes? What's the whole process, especially if it becomes a conversation with the audience?
Right.
And you do engage the people, that's the intent of it is that you are engaging the people that are coming to have a conversation. So it's gonna look awkward if Debbie, Jen or Paul are at your meeting next Thursday sitting in the audience. And although they have every right to do that, it's a community event to listen. Um, it still paints the picture. So that's why we had those conversations when we established this, that the goal would be for two people to attend. And then it's your responsibility to then bring that information back and talk about it at a board meeting.
So and you probably, you're probably gonna go there going back to public participation in a meeting.
Mm-hmm.
We don't have to do it, but we do. But and we can't necessarily limit what people say.
The content.
The content. But we can't limit the time.
So you can have time, place and manner restrictions.
Yeah.
Um, so you could say, this is when we do it. So you can't just yell at us in the middle of our business section. Um, you're you're permitted three minutes, you know? Um, I don't really like this because it's been challenged in some places, but some people say you gotta be a resident of the district to talk to us now. There has been. Varied support for and against that in courts. It's usually best not to do that if you can avoid it. Um, and.
Do you wanna address the manner?
Yeah, the manner, you can talk about how, you know, not using curse words or those kinda things or yelling or being disruptive. All those things are time, place and manner restrictions, right?
Um, if they're speaking about a specific student or specific employee, can they limit that?
Um, so look at the very last bullet on this page. Um. I I I'm going to give you this advice and I will always give you this advice until a court tells me otherwise. But I will have to tell you that it's not lock solid, right? That I believe if there's discussion about it, about a particular employee or a particular student. That you should do your best to try to stop that from occurring. Now, that may mean if the person's really adamant on talking to the board, that you may have to give that person the ability to enter into an executive session with you to talk about who you are. So if you go up to bill leaders and I wanna complain about a teacher and you say you're not allowed to complain here and I'm like, well, how how am I gonna complain? You're not giving me any purpose. Then you're probably forcing me to have you do something to try to prevent me from doing it. But if you say, well. Have you gone through this, talked to the principal, have you talked to superintendent, have you gone through all that and you still don't feel like you have justice? Then then that might, that might be a time. I might say might. I don't think you wanna get into a habit of it. But that might be a time where you might say, okay, this is an exception to the rule, but we might let this person come to us and talk to us in executive session. I don't recommend that. I don't think it should happen unless you wanna have twelve-hour board meetings all the time. But there could be a particular time where you shut somebody down and talk about a particular student or talk about a particular employee. And that. I would not let them talk to you until they've gone through the whole process. And until you've also maybe analyzed whether or not it's still valid for them to speak with you in executive session because that is a privilege. But there could be a time that you wanna do that. Now, I've kind of come, I mean, but.
That position's actually reinforced by your board policy. So we have specific board policy about speaking about in public individual students or employee related matters. So that's actually governed by your policy.
That doesn't, I mean.
Doesn't prohibit it, but you can use that. That's really where we've been as to say. This is the reason why you're gonna go through this process and not stand at the podium to start with. Because we have policy that directs you on what you're supposed to do.
Right, so um. So here's the thing, is I have advice on how to handle that, but it would be attorney-client advice that wouldn't wanna give in an open session right now to you as a board for around here. I think there's ways to deal with it and that's more of like attorney-client privilege to avoid litigation. Um, but, you know.
So because we dealt with this in the recent past, does that extend to board members?
While you're speaking?
No, does it extend to the public?
Like?
Talking about board members.
Um.
That happened here, obviously.
You gotta be a little more careful about that since you're elected officials.
Yeah. That's why I wanted the distinction.
Yeah.
So word free game.
Yeah, yeah.
Bill. What what liability, if any, does the board have if they? If a public participant. Communicates something that we wouldn't otherwise be able to do.
Oh, I don't think you have any liability because it's their choice to do it, like especially if you've taken a reasonable opportunity to try to stop them. But I mean, there are some times a parent wants to come and complain to you about their student who's on special ed. And has and wants to tell the whole world what their disability is and everything else and. They they don't, that's all protected information, but they've chose to waive it, right? Yeah.
I I understand that, but I meant more in the context of talking about another student.
Yeah, yeah. Um, again, unless they got that information from us somehow. We wouldn't have liability, but if they say, hey, Mrs. Johnson told me about this kid, then that liability didn't happen at the meeting, it happened before the meeting.
You know, first step would be to say, we don't discuss.
Right, it's your due diligence that's demonstrated to say that it's inappropriate. Because if you're not the legal parent or guardian, you don't have the right to waive that for that person.
Yeah, to disclose that. I see, I can give you a good example. I'm upset because I think my kid was unfairly disciplined or something. And I say, you know, Mark Wilson's kid did the same thing and he only got two days and my kid got six. Right, then that wouldn't be appropriate. That's why you try to prevent any of that from happening. Um, but again, I don't, I wanna make it really clear, I'm not saying start inviting everybody in the world into your executive session here complains. That would be a very limited exception after you felt that they've gone through the whole process and for whatever reason, they still have some. Potentially valid issue that hasn't been addressed by your administration. And I would examine that before, you know, I wouldn't just if they say this, I I would try to substantiate their claim before I invited them into executive session.
So um to to Mark's question about. Liability to the board. So if someone did come in a public meeting and start saying, start start talking in some manner about something that. Or related or whatever. No liability necessarily for us, but do we, is there some requirement or do we need to? Um, make them aware of.
Yeah, I think that's what you say to them when they begin to speak initially, that, you know, those are matters which are protected under privacy issues regarding employees and students. And we don't hear those in an open session. We happy to have have you have a meeting with the superintendent or the principal or assistant superintendent or treasurer to deal with that. Um, and I I'd say most of the time that alleviates the issue.
Just depends.
Yeah, yeah. Um, now where you could get in the liability, if you start engaging with them, then you start disclosing things. Which you wouldn't do. I mean, if that happens, I I'm gonna tell you, you can't prevent it. Um, I don't necessarily wanna like put people in handcuffs and walk them out of the meeting, just try to get through whatever time they have. Don't say anything and move on. No. It's your best advice. Um, sometime, obviously, we talked about the manner. Um, there is some ability if someone's repetitive to tell them you've already heard it. But I want you to be really careful. Um, I had a case in Hamilton County where literally this guy came to a board meeting for three years in a row. And pretty much read the same three pages. Former teacher, he was upset, he retired. And he was upset because he thought that the school was just going to hell in a handbasket because we weren't disciplining kids anymore. And. Board president had had called me, said that we have to deal with repetitive stuff and I said, no, but. Better make sure it's repetitive. Somebody had coached this guy because he started to read and the board president says, no. Mr. D, if you've heard it, we're not hearing anymore. I wouldn't let him talk. He said, but I got something new. And I said, no, we've heard that before too. And he sued us anyway. Should be careful. You just be better off listening to it. Okay. I know it's not fun, but um. Okay, we talked a little bit about public records. I do wanna make sure that you understand something, though, like you you can have public records. It doesn't matter if it's on your computer, if it's on your on your personal computer, your personal email account, your phone. If it is something that is created or received and it documents the functions, policies, decisions, procedures, operations, et cetera. Because if it looks like a duck, it sounds like a duck, it walks like a duck, it's a duck. Okay, it doesn't matter what cage it's in. Okay, so having said that, my practical advice is do not email board business unless you're using the board account. Your email account that you just don't. And unless it's perfunctory ministerial things, I would not text board business. You know, Michael and and the administrative team, I text you guys things, I'm fine. But but if you have board business that you need to put in writing, I highly recommend you do it on a on email. Because then I know it's saved and I know it's protected and I know it's preserved. Your text messages could be public records and if you're like me, I can't have my text, I my text box has to be clean all the time. Right, so I don't keep text messages. And you might delete one that otherwise someone else could say, yeah, keep. All right. But remember, it doesn't matter what it's on. Okay, it doesn't matter what medium it's in. It 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 matters what the content is. So I highly, highly recommend that you only use your board email account to put anything in writing that relates to board business. Okay, and, you know. Theoretically, you you could use your own email and not even send it to a board member, but if it's board business, it also potentially could be a record. If I know you're all using our account and there's a request, then Becky, who's a custodian of the records, can just go in, go to your, you guys, are you guys, um, are you guys used for your A site?
Meta.
Meta, she can go to meta, pull down, pull it up, have it ready to go, write all the emails.
But you will still receive an email from Becky and for, I think the only person this hasn't happened to yet is probably Jen. Um, but Becky will send you an email when we get a public record request that you have to affirm or disaffirm that you do not have anything on your personal account related to what the public records request is. Um, despite the fact that we'll pull the board side. But you also have to affirm or disaffirm that you don't have anything else to meet the public record requirement.
There's just a couple of things here that are identified to be just open and obvious, not not public records. Um, so um, personal calendars, I wanna bring that up if some of you might remember Governor Boinovich. He got sued for his personal calendars and he refused to keep a separate public calendar and private calendar, so he had to give off it.
Oh gee.
I think they were after him for some golf outing stuff or something at the time. I can't remember what it was about. Somebody, some political motivated thing, but um, yeah, so even though he is a Ohio bobcat. Um, there are sometimes things that might have attorney-client privilege, so you might get an email from me. That that and it'll say attorney-client privilege on the top or a letter. Sometimes I have to write write to board and then I'll say attorney-client.
But if it doesn't say, so I get an email back from you and it doesn't say attorney-client.
Doesn't necessarily mean it's not.
It doesn't mean it is.
It doesn't mean that it is, yeah. Not everything I communicate with you is gonna be attorney-client, but if I'm giving you advice, it is. So for instance, you called me, you texted me the other day about, do I have to respond to this? That really wouldn't be advice because I was just telling what the statute was.
Yeah, I kinda told you.
Yeah, just wanted me to tell you something different.
Yeah.
Okay, um, social security numbers, medical information, employee home address, is all that stuff, obviously, it's not public record. I'm not gonna go too much into this, but you do have to have a record retention schedule, that is a board policy by law, one of those policies that you have to approve. Um, you also have, and I don't have it on here, but you have a records commission. And you need to meet once a year. On the commission is the board president, the treasurer and superintendent, that group I told you about. They're going after school district saying, prove to me you had your records commissioned meeting annually. And they can't prove it and they're suing them. So make sure you do. Okay, um, there is a way to dispose of records um a- after the period that's supposed to be maintained. There's a process involved. I don't need to get into too much detail with you, the record commission does it. Um, um. But if you fail to maintain records, you also can be found to be a thousand dollars per record and attorney's fees. Um. I had an interesting case in with the Supreme Court a long, long time ago, late nineties where um a a board member in the community. Didn't like a particular teacher. Um, and got like fifteen people in the community to all anonymously file complaints against this teacher. Um, and they were all anonymous and the board took no action on it. And actually, the the issue was they claimed that the teacher was having an affair with a student. Um, teacher was a pretty young individual. He was dating someone who was the sister of the student. They looked almost exactly alike. And the superintendent knew that and he said, this is, threw it away. And they tried to sue and they said, no, it's, you didn't take any action, you didn't do an investigation, you did nothing and they weren't public records and they won the case. So so sometimes those anonymous complaints, um, they, when you get those, if you probably wanna, I wanna talk about what do we wanna do with it? You know, like we wanna make maintain this and you get anonymous complaint and then you investigate. Of course, at that point, it becomes a public record, but um, the anonymous issues, especially with email now, we get a lot of anonymous emails where you can't trace who it came from.
Or you get a letter in the mail.
Yeah, or a letter in the mail. Um, and I mean, you know, Becky and and Michael and Laurie, they know this, like I really believe that when, you know, as much as you sometimes you do want to. Comply with records requests, the best thing you can do is kill the people with kindness. Once they know that you're getting under their skin, they're getting under your skin, I should say. You get more, you get more. So the worst, so you just, yeah, what do you need? I'm happy to help you, right? That's the best way to be. So, um, talked about emails a little bit already, um. Talked about that, um, text messages we talked about. I just think, again, your best bet is to not text board business, period. It's okay to text, like is it okay to have that meeting or in the meeting, like if and if you get texts from Michael that are just throwing data out your way, I think that's fine. But for your perspective, I wouldn't text if you gotta put it in writing. Um. Uh, the the courts are really struggling with text messages because of kind of this transient, like piece of information, like because it's almost like conversation. Um, so I tend to see that when the courts, when when there's a request for text messages and someone said that. Either I don't wanna turn them over or I don't have them anymore and someone wants to argue that they've been destroyed. I I feel like the courts are are raising the bar a little bit higher to just to be able to prove that it is in fact documenting organizations' functions, policies and decisions. But um, you know, that. That may not always be the case, so I just would prefer you not to do it.
I know it's a thousand dollars per, but is there a maximum?
No. Yeah. Um, a lot of times what the court will do is they won't, they won't give you a thousand per document, they'll just say a thousand dollars fine and attorney's fees, I kill you. Um, social media, um.
Hey, Bill, before we leave.
Yeah, go ahead.
Topic, uh, one further on.
Okay.
I I tend to just operate better with my calendar from one spot versus through email, so that's perfunctory in my mind. And I. Any, any, I mean.
If someone asks for your calendar. What what has happened since that time is um, for one of us try to say, I'm not gonna give you the calendar at all. And then the court said, well, you're gonna have to give the calendar, but you can read that. From your calendar, the items that are not public records.
That's the risk. I mean, that's just that I would, as opposed to there's any lack of transparency or if I had to provide public, you know.
I'm not going with this is real wood. I've never had a request for a board member calendar. I've had requests for superintendents to try to recount. But we've never had one for, but yeah, you can keep it on one calendar. You don't have to.
And I'm scheduling meetings sometimes, we get that same email, that's not the board email because it makes my mind.
Um, if you you mean like your uh, you like your meeting scheduling? I I don't, I mean, if you're gonna use your private email to schedule a meeting or that, that's not, I don't think that's an issue, just any, any like content.
Yeah.
You know, you can use your common sense on that.
Actually, that's an interesting question though, because so. With the, like on my my iPhone, right? So I've got, I pulled my calendar and it's got my personal calendar, it's got the board calendar, it's got work calendar.
My advice calendar.
You know, when I have to be, you know, wherever, but um, I think. I guess depending on how the the meetings are scheduled because through, because we use Gmail. So if if there's a calendar request for work for for school, excuse me, and it's going to the NAPLS email, there is the Google Calendar, right? So in that case.
Here's why I'm not worried about it, because Becky's gonna have her. Here's why I'm not worried about it, because Becky's gonna have a copy of the record.
Oh, well, so it's, so basically, she could just pull the Google Calendar, and we wouldn't have to worry about it.
Not worried about it, yeah, yeah.
I got you.
Yeah, yeah, so as long as someone has the record, it's fine, so I can't say, well, John, you destroyed it, but it's, she kept it, we're still good. Right? As long as it's been preserved. So in that situation, if you, if a Google Calendar invite went out for like this meeting, and you got rid of it, you didn't keep it, you deleted it, or whatever.
The record.
We have it still.
Yeah.
Here's a question about that. So, uh, when we get requests for emails, and Michael sent the email to the board. If I just produce one copy of that email, I can produce his, I don't have to produce.
No, because it'll, it'll identify everybody received it. Yep. Now, if it's one that, like, let's say the four of us are a thread, and it keeps going back and forth, well, if you print off Michael's, and you get all the thread at one, that's fine. But if you don't get all the thread, then you might have to.
But worst case, go back to where Paul is, and the maintenance of his own calendar, you have the right to where Bill went. That if it would be subject to public records for any reason, you have the ability to redact your personal and business and legal and everything else associated to it. You only produce what's school-related in the scope of the public records.
And if someone challenged that, then we would just ask, you know, and we went to court, then we'd have, and the judge do a camera inspection, say, no, 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 everything that was on Mr. and Ms.
But that's where we would begin.
Phone records, so does that mean, you know, your bill would shows call, calls you, maybe extended. And then computers, does that include history of searches?
It could, yeah, yeah. But it still would have to be, like, it still would have to dock, like, you did, let's say you did a, let's say, on your board computer, you researched, uh. The score of the forty-niners Packers game today. Well, it doesn't document any organizations' functions, policies or decisions, so it's not a record, so we wouldn't turn it over.
Right. Just in connection with the committee that Laurie and I are on, for instance, I do a lot of research on that topic. Um, I may see something that's of interest, um, I may see something that perhaps could have served as a warning, not a specific. Student or topic, but this is now something I'm charged with knowledge of.
See, but that's just your knowledge, it doesn't organize, it doesn't document the organization's functions or policies, right?
So you're right as an individual, back to free speech and their research you're doing, and, and operation of your responsibility as a Board of Education member. So you don't check those rights at the door, you still have the ability and responsibility that you can do that.
Now, if you did all this research, right, and then you wrote an email to the committee, and said, this is what I believe in, or it's what I think, or it's my recommendations, of course. Then that email then becomes the actual.
Sure.
The email, not the search.
Not the search. Okay, so social media, um. This, this is, this just goes in a lot of different places, so first of all, um, I know there are some times in some school districts where board members have their own social media page. And it'll say, Bill Dieters, board members, New Albany School. Well, remember, that's just your page. Um, and it may or may not be a public record, um, but it could also very much depend on what you write on there. So, um, if I had my way, and people, you know, you pay me for my advice, but you always have to take it. That's the beauty, beautiful thing about it. Um, I wouldn't have a fit, any kind of social media page that associates you as a board member. Because it becomes difficult then sometimes to, um, identify like what's public and what's not public, what's protected by First Amendment. What's not protected by First Amendment. Let's say I'm a board member, and I have Bill Dieters, board member, New Albany Schools. And, and then people begin commenting on something that I say, and I don't like what they comment, and I get rid of it. Well, if I violate that person's First Amendment rights, I don't know. One argument is, no, it's a private Facebook page. Some other argument, yeah, but you held yourself out as a board member, and you were addressing things about the board. And I commented on it, why don't I have the right to comment on it? It's a place I don't wanna go.
Yeah.
I don't wanna have that argument. Um, there are some times what happens is, I'm, I have my board member page, and I say things. And then people think, well, that's how the whole board thinks. Well, no, that's just really how Bill thinks, but the public doesn't always perceive it, it's just Bill thinking that. They may think that the board thinks that. So, my first advice would just be, don't do it. Um, but, you know, I've had debates with board members about, and they're like, no, I feel like this is my responsibility, I'm being transparent, I told my constituents I would do this. And I'm like, okay, well, then you have to understand, then we probably need to have a discussion and dive into the weeds a little bit about what you can do and can't do. The pros and cons of that are, because, um, you might really upset your other board members. You might also upset the issue legally about violating somebody's First Amendment rights, and just. It, it deserves a deeper conversation if you're choosing to do that.
Um, it's easy for most that come across as the position of the board, too.
Well, it's how people perceive it, right? And their perceptions are reality, so even if I say, well, I'm just one of five, but this is what I think. You know, it's probably better than just saying, this is what I think, or, but, you know, peo- and then people don't always, it's, it's like, like with booster groups, right? You know, a booster group, you know, if you have the touchdown club, let's say, they're not a board function, they're a five-on-one C three on their own. But if someone starts embezzling money from their fundraiser, guess who's gonna get the finger pointed at them? Because people don't disassociate those groups with the board, they feel like they're part of the school, so it's even worse when you have board members, so I just would be very careful about it. Um, those are the individual account issues, I prefer you not to do it, um, and even if you do have your own personal page. It's probably best not to address board business on it. Now, um, I mean, um. But I can't tell you you can't do it, because you have, as Michael said before, you don't, you don't give up your rights as a citizen just because you ran for the board. Um, our pages, um, I, I know, again, that having social media is, like, you just have to do it now, I guess, if you're an organization. If you do it, I would recommend, from the school's perspective, that you turn off comments, period. Because once you allow comments, you have to allow comments. Okay, um, there are some companies out there who are trying to say that. Everything on your social media page is a public record, and therefore you need to maintain it, and they're just trying to sell you all these services. Um, I don't necessarily agree with that unless what's on your social media page is original documents. A lot of times, like, if you have, like, if you have a PR person for the district, and they write an article, well, it's on the social media page, but I have the article still. If I put up the, the calendar, it's on the social media page, but I have the calendar still. So, just, but if it's original content, and it's only on there, and it's nowhere else, then you probably need to maintain it, okay? Any questions on that?
Are you gonna cover Title IX in this?
Uh, no, but I can.
So, we'll go back to where we were, just where on the tweet, that one, that one, now.
This one?
That one. So, talk about the new reality of what's happening in Title IX related to social media.
Uh, I'm not sure I'm understanding what you're referring.
I only post about football and pride.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, yeah. So, we're, as you know, Title IX is, in education, it's, it's a gender discrimination. Um, sex discrimination, part of the Civil, the Civil Rights Act. Um, we are getting more and more, um. Issues starting to come up as it relates to male and female sports. So there is a case that's, that's still pending in front of the Office of Civil Rights in Cleveland, where there's a league in, um, sort of in the Miami County. Uh, area, uh, near the Dayton area, some of the northern schools, where they're arguing that it's discrimination, that the girls' basketball games are on Saturdays, and the boys' games are on Fridays. Um, and as part of that, well, the cheerleaders only cheer for the boys' game, they don't cheer for the girls' game, and the band only shows up at the boys' game, they don't show up at the girls' game. Then, you, uh, you, you cover on your page and your tweets, all the boys' sports to this extent, but you don't cover the girls' sports. You just gotta be aware of all of that, still, to this day, right? Um, so if, if your athletic director has, is communicating these things, they need to make sure for both, both genders that it's done. With some, um.
Balance.
Balance, I wouldn't say equal, because it's not gonna be equal, but there's gotta be balance, right?
So, how does that get differentiated? I'm gonna use John as the example, so John is obviously a parent of the school district. He posts on his personal page, information related to lacrosse, because his daughters have played in lacrosse, which is used them as the example. And everything that John posts is about lacrosse, um, as John, so, which may be true. But now, because it's part of this whole conversation going on in the courts, related to this, because it's being used within a specific school district. Um, a superintendent or an athletic director only posts about the boys' sports. Everything on social media is boys, 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 not girls, so as part of this litigation, perhaps. Um, it's been mentioned that there's no equal opportunity to celebrate, so when does it become the district versus John as an individual, as a dad. Posting about New Albany lacrosse, because his kids play on the New Albany lacrosse team, when does that diff- get differentiated and how?
The, the best thing I could say to you would, one, it's gonna be a case-by-case analysis, but it's gonna depend on how you present yourself on social media.
As a dad versus board member.
So if it's just John McCollum's X account, Twitter account, whatever, so, uh, John McCollum, New, New Albany board member account. It may not be an official account, but it can be perceived that way.
So, um, for the record, I actually think the school does a really good job of promoting all the kids.
We pay very close attention to it, and it's not just about athletics, it's everything.
Exactly, I mean, it's, so we do, I think, I gotta give Patrick credit for putting in the effort on that. There, we do have, however, I know, individual sports have their own.
Pages.
Pages, and since, since it was mentioned, and it's.
Are they private pages, or, um?
I don't know, that's.
They're public.
They're, they're public, but I don't know who runs them, but typically.
If it's district-based or versus parent-based, I will go district, if there's a district club group organization that has their own social media account. That's part of the district, then we have equal opportunity, everybody has that opportunity, and then that would get promoted, obviously, by the district.
Yeah.
If the parents in the community create their own group, then that's not us.
So, since you use these sports, I'll throw it as an example, so New Albany Football, I believe, has its own Instagram page, I think. Um, and, because I see a bunch of New Albany Instagram posts, okay? New Albany Girls Lacrosse has a Twitter page. That no one ever updates, right? And I'm not putting that on the coaches or anybody, I mean, they, they've got a million other things to do, they're, so. In some cases, I get that there's the district that has the district's social media, and that's what's, where it's even. But if you've got individual sports, and they're responsible, and they're only posting what they post, I don't think that that should be something that has to be. For the, you know, we shouldn't be holding the football team responsible for another, you know, the baseball team not posting on their social media page.
Yeah, I think there's, the distinction is gonna be like what, what's at the district level, I mean, you can get, you can get really down into the, right?
Okay, so we're talking, we're talking specifically about the district.
The district level, and it's promotion of district only, if it would be one-sided, that's the issue.
Where it would be a problem would be, is the football team said, we'd like to have an X account, we say, yeah, it's a great idea, and then the girls' volleyball team wants to, we're like, no, we're not gonna let you do it.
Right.
Now, we create it, we let them both have an account, their determination, how much they use their own account, that's gonna be their own.
They all have access to it. Equal access, but.
Anything we put out as a district, we just need to make sure.
Well, it goes back to the balance task, we try to make sure we are very balanced in promoting everything across the school districts, so no one can come back and say we're one-sided.
Well, and, and last thing for the record is, I know I've said it already, we're talking about sports here, but again, I think we do it across the board.
Across the board.
Arts, clubs, I, I think, again, credit.
Achievement, yeah, okay. Um, this, I just have something, we're getting more and more hacking of school district accounts, so just be really careful on your school account, like. I forget where it was, Becky, it's some treasure, like, sat in a bunch of money somewhere, it was a couple, like, a year ago. Treasure got something, and, like, yeah, and, and if I was hacking, and I wanted to get into, into the district. I would think that a board member account might be a vulnerable place to get into.
Yeah, they, the bad people got into an email between, uh, the treasurer and the bank, and was saying that they were changing.
Gave them, gave them their account number.
So, looked legitimate, I, I.
It was like, it was like, it was a lot of money.
Yeah, there's ransomware attacks everywhere, but we have significant security protocols in place on the cyber side. I mean, Mike Boss, as Director of Technology, is constantly coming up waves, um, to prove that, and we have lots of safeguards in place. And we do phishing exercises with staff on a regular basis, um, to see if we can catch them, and help them then understand. Because they take a professional development opportunity, um, to learn about phishing and how they can safeguard themselves, um, as a result of getting caught.
Um, another thing here, um, sometimes there's issues where someone comes to your board meeting, they wanna record you, you know, like, got their phone out, they're recording you and all that. Um, I think they're probably allowed to record you, um, although you could tell them, like, if you're gonna, if you're depressed, and you come with a camera, or you wanna record. You gotta stand in this particular place, so they can't, it can't be disruptive or obstructive or whatever, so they can't just stand up in the middle of the. Of the meeting, in the chair, right, that's manners, you could say, no, camera recording, audio, media is in that corner, okay? Um, we talked to, uh, some, about some of this a little bit, um, superintendent are the only ones that report directly to you, kinda came to your question before, Debbie. Um, you know, it's typically good practice, especially when you have boards, um, that sometimes get split. That when there's responses that come from the treasurer superintendent, they come, they, you know, you might ask the superintendent a question. Superintendent may feel that that needs to be answered, but don't be surprised if it doesn't go out to everybody, because you, as your five board members, don't have a unique intimate relationship. With the superintendent and treasurer, you're, you're an entity, right? Likewise with me, necessarily, I represent all five of you, I don't, I represent the board, I don't represent individuals, so sometimes, like, you know. Unless for some rea- some other legal reason, I can't, like, if John tells me something, he says, I don't want you to tell the board members, I, I don't have that ability, I have to tell you, okay? Um, I, I do think that, and I didn't really say this the best way possible, there's a lot in this slide, um. Sometimes I really worry about boards, and again, this happens more when there's a split, or sometimes when there's newer board members, um. You know, remember, um, try to put yourself in the shoes of the superintendent or treasurer, it'd be like you being at work, and have five, and having five people. You directly report to. Right? And someone says, do this, and someone says, do this, and someone says, do this, but I can't if I do this, right? Like, remember, these two people work for the five of you. So, um, it's probably good if you're having that, you know, it's one thing to ask a question or something that can be answered quickly, or, hey, this is on the agenda, can you tell me a little bit about that? That's one thing, but when you start asking for initiatives, or developing that, or creating, you know, creating something that's gonna take some time. I think it's good to be cognizant of the fact that you should probably coordinate that, those requests, right? Because if, if one of you is asking Becky to do something, and another one asks you something else, and she's also trying to do her work. Um, that becomes problematic, so a lot of boards will just say, if there's those kind of things that are requiring data, or production, or creation of something. That usually goes to the board president, right? Then you say, hey, Debbie, I'd like to have Becky run some numbers on this, what do you think about that? Yeah, I think it's a good idea, then you run it, and then it goes out to everybody, right? I've just seen some times where, um. Boards are kinda running, their superintendent and treasurer is kinda ragged with all these different requests coming in from places, and, um, while these two individuals here are probably, um. Will probably tell you if that's happening, you know, sometimes I have some new, young, inexperienced treasurers and superintendents that are afraid to say anything. And it becomes problematic, so if, to the extent that you can help them with it, I think these two will just tell you. But, um, just remember.
I actually have had to do that, not in this district, but in a previous district, um, because it was a huge request by a couple people. So I did go to the president, say, what do you want me to spend my time?
Yeah, but yeah, some people don't have that confidence, and they're feeling like, well, if I do that, I'm, I'm gonna like, admit that I don't know how to do my job, or I can't do it, or whatever, and. You know, I mean, that's why there is that process involved, um, and again, like, I also have board members, sometimes I will call someone on the treasurer staff. And say, I want this information, well.
I'd like you to know that.
Yeah, well, hopefully, you've trained your staffs, that if that happens, they come to you first before you do it, and then they're. Um, and then likewise with this, with, it's not in here either, but like, you've been in the relationship with me, like, I have to talk to any of you that call me. So if Mark calls me and starts asking me questions, I can't say, well, I'm not allowed to talk to you, the board president, and say, I could, because I represent all of you, right? Um, but it usually is better to have some kind of protocol, that you talk to the board president, and say, hey, I need to call Dieters on something, this is what I need to call him on. Have any problem, or, or, hey, I'm gonna call Dieters, whether you say I can or can't, but I wanna let you know, so you know about it, right? Like, at least there's some of that process involved, because I think it, you know, what can happen is, is, uh, and again. I don't think this, when you have boards that get split, it happens a lot, but then, you know, the superintendent or treasurer will call me and say, hey, you've talked to board members for four hours last, last month? You know, well, yeah, like, I typically would tell them if I, but that happens sometimes, so, one for the billing. Like, I typically would tell them if I, but that happens sometimes. So one for the billing process, it's good that there's some knowledge for for accountability. Two, I think it's a good for me and and it also is better for us to operate as our in our relationship because what sometimes happens when when a board is split, you'll call me with your question. You'll call me with the question. Both of you leave out facts that are not germane to what you want the answer to be. And. And then you get two different answers, but there were two different inputs, right? So it's just, I think it's helpful sometimes to do that.
So maybe you have seven minutes.
Okay, I'm almost done, actually. Ohio Ethics Laws, I don't need to spend a lot of time on this. Um, you cannot use your position to gain anything from a monetary standpoint, secure anything for value. So if someone says, yeah, here are tickets to the to the Blue Jackets game in a box, and the reason I'm doing this is because we do all, we sell you all of your your cleaning supplies, that that's a problem, right? So I've been, the thing about that you gotta be careful about is not only is there a statute in the board section, there's also a criminal statute related to this. Um, I think that's all pretty, pretty simple. Hiring family members, probably the last thing we need to talk about here. Um, if you have a family member that's kind of in that first line, mom, dad, siblings, your kids, you cannot vote for them to be hired. That's not. Um, you cannot lobby, advocate, deliberate. If you have a family member who's gonna be hired and and let's say that that's the superintendent's recommendation, um, I would probably just make it very clear as soon as the recommendation's made that I'm not gonna vote on this. I want the public to know I never talked to anybody about it and deliberated about it. And this is not, I'm not involved with this decision. Okay, if for some reason they're in a consent agenda, pay attention to that. If someone's in that consent agenda, then maybe we didn't know they're a family member of yours. I need to pull it out. And then collective bargaining agreements and family members. Um, I believe if you have a spouse or a brother or a sister who's in the collective bargaining unit that we bargain with, that you should avoid all appearances of impropriety. Not be involved in any deliberations or discussions regarding that contract and not vote on it. Okay, that's more than what the law says. Okay. The law says you can vote on it, um, as long as your family member is not an officer on the bargaining team, but that's, I just don't think that looks good, right? Um, you may not vote if you receive health insurance through your spouse under the board district or you were on the bargaining. But again, that's the law. I say go one step further.
What if they are participating in health insurance as a board member?
As a board member, that's not a problem. Um, and that's why I said consider the appearance of impropriety. There is also a pretty good document that I think the Attorney General publishes that you can get online, which is, it's basically ethics issues for board of education members. And it's a pretty good document that's worth worth taking a read. Um, and then there's some other other resources that are worthwhile to look at that we got some of this information from. Time not perfect.
Why I set you up that way is they would have the opportunity to.
So you have any questions?
Any questions?
You know, just to touch on social media, I think it's worth reiterating that even if you aren't posting on an account that is like a board account that you're representing yourself as a board member, you are always a board member.
You are.
So you just, I mean.
Yeah, you like, you know, you gotta be careful, like, someone might, someone might put something on there that, you know, maybe it's an opinion that you agree on, and maybe it's even potentially controversial and you like, you like the post.
Yeah.
You you're. You know, again, you have the right to do that, you know, but you under, you understand that there might be more collateral issues involved with that, right?
And people are are, they don't separate you from being the board member. So whenever you give an opinion on anything, it's like you're always the board member too.
Um, one thing real quick too, for those of you that um like listening to podcasts, we have a, we have a podcast that's actually pretty good. Um, I haven't been on it yet, that's probably why it's good, but um, and right now, it mostly deals with special education issues, but they're short. They're like eight to 10 minutes at a time. Um, and if you get a chance, just you might wanna check it out. And I think you go to that. I think that.
We'll send you this electronically so that you actually get active, uh, because he skipped over the other, the other resource pages that actually have the ability to see um the hyperlinks. So I'll send this to you electronically because we have it from Bill.
The only two hyperlinks I didn't get on there was the Sunshine Old Manual and the ethics thing. So if you can find that hyperlink, if they didn't have hyperlinks, you have to go into their page. And then follow all the right groups, yeah.
But we will send this to you electronically.
Any questions? Um, well, thank you for having me out.
Thank you.
It's kind of, it's it's refreshing to come out when we're not, you know. And um, and I I commend you for, you know, I think all boards should probably do this every once in a while and not many do, so. But any other questions, feel free. Um, um, I think you guys all have my contact information. If you don't, I can get it to you. I don't know, thank you for serving.
Thanks, Bill. This was great. Really helpful. Good refresher. Okay, we're gonna move into executive session. Now, may I have a motion and a second to adjourn to executive session as permitted by section one, two, one dot two, two, G four of the Ohio Revised Code to consider confidential information related to the marketing plan, specific business strategy, production techniques, trade secrets, or personal financial statements of an applicant for economic development assistance and one, two, one dot two, two, G one to consider the employment, the appointment, employment, promotion, or compensation of a public employee.
Submit.
Mr. McCollum and Mr. Newmoff, Ms. Jenkins, please call up.
Mr. McCollum.
Yes.
Vice President Newmoff.
Yes.
Mrs. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Yes, and the motion passes. We are adjourned into executive session and we do not anticipate taking any action in that session.
You're actually gonna go across the hall um into the food service office.
Um, the next item on our agenda are discussion items, beginning with um uh, review on the Cooperative Strategies Report. Superintendent, sorry.
So this is really just informational to remind you that Cooperative Strategies has been invited to come to the board meeting on Monday evening. We started a partnership with the city of New Albany and Naco to conduct a study within the school district over the course of the last shit, last year. The last nine months, we've done a lot of work specifically with those parties. Um, Karen Darling-Hammond will be at the board meeting on Monday evening to present from Cooperative Strategies, the report um that will take through um consideration of the demographics, future development, and residential development that's being proposed. Um, either the information was provided directly by Naco or directly by the city. So um, given the importance of what we believe Monday night represents, um, after the meeting, um, based upon my conversations with President Kalanowski, we believe that there should be a letter that goes home to families within our school district that also gets posted on um district websites, so it'll be picked up within the community realm to try to tell people in our community that this report's been done. Here's where you access it. You can watch the presentation that's actually done at the board meeting. So that if people want to actually watch the presentation, we tell them how to find it. Um, but to put them on notice, for the lack of a better term, that this has happened because we believe it's gonna link to long-term work that's gonna be required of the school district that we believe needs to become a very public topic for conversation. So um, this is the draft of the parent communication um that Debbie and I have worked on. Um, we would request that you review this prior to Monday, give Debbie or I any feedback you may have because we would like the full board to be signatories on it. So um, clearly you need to provide input to that individually um, to the board president or myself, um, because we would like you to be a signatory, given the importance of what it represents. So um, the rest of it will happen Monday evening at the board meeting with Karen present. Um, we have invited people from the city, we've invited people from Naco. We do believe some of them will be in attendance so that you also have an opportunity to formulate questions based upon the presentation. But again, Monday is the start of a conversation. This is not gonna get solved Monday night. There's just information items that are gonna lead to lots of questions and lots of work. Um, but knowing that, we believe we need to put the public on notice. So we would ask for your review and consideration of this and to confirm with President Kalanowski any changes, if any, you would like to see. Um, and then confirmation that you agree based upon the level of importance that everyone will be signatories.
So so we would want this to go out immediately following the board meeting. So we just need to have it ready.
We wanna send it Monday night. We need to control the rumor.
Yeah.
It's gonna spread.
There is already some stuff out on social media saying, you know, alerting people that there's something big coming. All right, um, next on the agenda is a discussion around our board committees that we formed at the beginning of the school year. Um, I just wanna get the ball rolling in terms of, you know, we've really gotta get started on these committees. And uh, I wanted to see if we could come up with some parameters for the committees. So maybe just take a couple of minutes to look at this outline and then the questions for the group are at the end. So the first page is kinda outlining the desired outcomes for each of these committees. And then the second page is the questions I came up with around how do we structure these committees? And then it seems intuitively, I guess, that that some of the committee work needs to happen before other committee work. Um, so maybe we just go through these. And then any other questions you guys wanna add or open items for discussion, um, we can just add those to this list, but so in terms of the structure of these committees, um, and me, and the structure can be different for the different committees too. Um, for example, the finance committee, we know the FRC operates best with five, five people and their community members. Um, but so, you know, John, maybe you and I start with the facilities committee. And John's had prior committee work um related to facilities um with the intermediate building. So um, John and I have had some discussions around maybe the desired structure. Do you wanna share some of your thoughts, John?
Well, um, sure. I um, you know, Debbie had asked me about this, I was just kind of thinking back to um some, so different types of committees that we've, we've done. I think it is important. We kinda talked about this a little bit earlier when we were talking about committees in terms of uh, you know, oh, being open and engaging community members. Um, but I, as I recall, and I think Michael, you were probably, well, you were there at the time too. When we did the last building project, there was, there was a lot of um work that was done or committee work, if you wanna call that, that was involving the administration, involving staff, seeking input from industry experts. And as I recall, what happened along the way is there would be points in time in that work that was done kind of with the experts, so so to speak, that then it was a, okay, we're at a point where we wanna get some community input. And we had.
Sure.
Sure.
Yeah.
What was that?
Sure.
Sure. Did community meetings where you got people to come in and they could walk around?
Yeah.
Okay.
And most of it was design related, uh, after they got through the initial pedagogical conversations with teachers and everything that took place.
Yes.
Um, and talking about what does the inside look like, what does learning look like, all those conversations pedagogically happened with faculty and staff and administration.
Right.
But then beyond that, once it got into design phase with the architects and the owners rep, there were charrettes that were created on specific topics in a charrette.
That the community then could come and provide.
We invited people to come for public participation.
And as I recall, there was a lot of good feedback that we got and there were design changes that were made.
Yes.
To me, that that worked out really well. Um, and that would be my thought on how this type of academic facility um committee would run as well.
So what was the core group then, John? Like the core.
Oh, the administration.
Yeah.
Just administrators?
Administration, the owners reps and the board.
Yeah.
And the board.
Yeah, because uh, again, um, there's there's, I mean, when we all went to school, they were square, you know, square rooms with desks and you know, chalkboard at the front of the room. Uh, and so perception of what we think of great learning environments is a lot different than what, you know, I would say the experts know today. So I think, um, I think engaging a committee of uh, and doing the study with, you know, ki- kind of in phases like that would would make sense where let's, let's get all of the pedagogical and academic, you know, kind of what's the current and, you know, kind of future setup of what, you know, the ideal learning structure is like. Come up with some ideas there and then get to a point where we begin to engage the community and say, okay, these are some ideas, tell us what you think. As opposed to, you know, trying to get a committee of twenty or thirty people together and having to interview, interview, you know, every parent in the district that wants to be part of it. I, again, I think we should, we should be as open and engaged with the community as we can. I just don't know that that's probably the right setup for this type of a study. I would say the same thing to some degree about the athletic piece too.
Yeah.
Right? Uh, on the athletic side of things, you know, Richie Wildhouse obviously needs to be involved. I would think coaches would need to be involved. Um, maybe even to some degree, there's at least engagement with the city and Parks and Rec about what some of their facilities planning is related to what they've got versus what we need. And and we do some of that work before then inviting in the community for their input feedback. Cause you're going to have, particularly when it comes to sports, you're gonna have people who are focused on.
Their pet.
Their, their sport.
Yeah.
They're gonna wanna wanna talk about that and we should listen to that. We should, we should engage with them. It's, it's no, it's not unlike you know, some of the feedback and and what we've gotten already for the baseball parents. They have some really good ideas about things that they want to see and how they'd like to improve the facilities, but it's, it's just baseball. Um, so in in my mind, that, that, that that would be probably the most efficient, effective way to go about it. Engaging community members along the way at phases, but not having a big giant committee that could get two comers.
And Bill, would, would those committees be open? Public meetings?
Most likely, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Oh, you know, and a lot of that too is once you kind of engage like an architect or something too, they'll run a lot of those things for you.
So that's where I was gonna go. I think even before you get to the process that John just described, I think we have to back this completely up into the existing reality on the school campus. The last time the master plan was updated was twenty ten, to the best of my knowledge, because it predated me. Um, but that's what I found. Um, so there's actually documentation, it was called a campus master plan that was produced in two thousand and ten within the school district in cooperation with Harrison Planning Group at Moody and Olin, to where John just went to basically come in and conduct a facility study to give us the current reality about, here's the facility, this is its age, this is its current condition, this is lifeline, this is the future work that's gonna be required. This is what life expectancy is, whatever the product is, bleachers versus field versus track versus on the athletic side. And then in the classroom space piece, um, understanding what is the existing reality to then engage in a process that then goes to the next part about, well, how would we reimagine the campus best to meet the academic developmental needs of children, based upon what we're doing, which grade levels are where? And how are grade levels impact with any future residential growth and enrollment? And what does that future residential growth and enrollment look like as far as the number? To then determine, is our existing facility space enough or is the capacity not enough? And then it leads to a new school building on campus, which then leads to a whole nother level of conversations about. And that's where we would need the architects, what's even feasible with the property we own on campus versus what's not our property that might be adjacent to this property that might be owned currently like the city, like the field that we rent off of Cardulus as an example. That belongs to the city, but it's leased to us through a lease agreement. So that leads to a whole nother of a conversation. We would need expertise from the third party side, and that's where, because Debbie has consultants whenever questions, I would pose that to the board. Becky and I would probably be in agreement. Becky and I would probably be in agreement in that discussion that we need a third party to come in that is that, that does a facility study that would update, I'm just going to call it the master plan, because that's what existed here in 2010. And go through that whole process, because we have to understand what we currently have. That then gets combined with the residential information that we'll know from cooperative strategies to determine where do we go next.
And those companies will do focus groups.
So there would be, you're right, there would be an opportunity for
Yeah, and then the nice thing about that is that that's not your meeting, then you just hire them, they do it. You guys can attend. They'll also meet with you all in the, you know, as a board, but they'll, they'll get focus groups, they'll get whatever it is, whether it's
But in that structure, and that's really where Debbie went, based upon our conversations in November, October, November, December. I think those could be two different things, which is why your committees are structured that way. I think the work in athletics is different than the work in academics. There'll be a relationship that will eventually happen. But I think one firm could be working on academics and another firm could be working on athletics. Or it might be the same firm, but it's different people that are point people based upon their areas of expertise. Because I think there will be different people that have those areas of expertise. That's why we suggested actually separating the two. They'll come back to the full part of the conversation, but I think it needs to be done in both worlds, academics and in athletics. For campus master planning.
Yeah, because I'm sure that, well, and, and if you're using multiple entities, you're also going to probably get multiple views of a plan that then you can either mesh together or pick one over the other. But, you know, I would, you know, given our unique one campus footprint, you know, there, someone might say, well, this is an ideal place for a field. Someone else may say, well, this might be an ideal place for a new elementary school. So, but that's, that's the reason you, you bring
But using that as an example, even the conversations with baseball and softball parents related to the project that they wanted to really deter. We did, we were honest with them to say, listen, we're, we're interested in this, and we think it's a great project. But we also have to understand the future of the school district, because school is our primary function. And if we ever have to add to this campus, where is that school going if it's on this campus for what property we currently own? Versus we could then acquire perhaps in partnership with others that have other property that's around us. But we have to know the academic answer, because we wouldn't go invest, and I'll just use that as an example. We know people have asked us about improving the middle school football field specifically to make it more of a multi-purpose turf field, that it can be used more readily as a high school, middle school complex to give more access and everything else that comes with it, with a competition track, lighting, bleachers, all that stuff. Well, that's probably a one and a half million dollar investment. I'm just round number, one and a half million bucks guessing. So if that's a million and a half, we wouldn't go invest that to come back six months later and say, well, now we need that to be where the school is. We, we have to know that bigger picture. So I think there has to be a comprehensive facility study done that creates a new master plan that, that gets combined with additional information coming from cooperative strategies to figure out the game plan for the future. I think that's our responsibility.
So that comes first.
I think that is, that's the first thing that has to happen in my mind to understand the rest of the story. So we would recommend that we're in the marketplace, either RFP or just basically sending emails, because we'll get responses to architectural firms, because that's typically who's conducting the facility study related to schools to come in and partner with the school district. So we would seek proposals to basically come into the school district to contract and partner to do that work. And we need that third party expertise, because that's not, I don't do that.
Wouldn't it be easier to just let them update the 2010?
I think they can start with the basis of the 2010, because that needs to be looked at, because that's what I found. I mean, I use that to educate myself when I came here in 2013. It's very informative.
Really good, yeah.
But it needs to be updated.
And depending on how involved you want to be, like a lot of times what'll happen is you'll just narrow it down to like one or two firms. And those come and give you a fifteen minute presentation as to what they would do as opposed to somebody else.
As I recall last time, I mean, there were probably six or seven firms that submitted proposals.
They absolutely will submit.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. It's going to be a big, I'm asking, it's going to be a big job.
How many, how, how long will it take to get that done?
It's probably, you've got to give at least two weeks and a month for a response to an RFP if we go to the street to do it. So, I mean, realistically, it's probably, yeah, so we could send the email, that'll speed up the process, we don't have to do the RFP. But I would say it's probably, you're looking at four weeks for solicitation, and then you have to go through the process to see or to select. So you're probably six to eight weeks out.
But then to get the whole study done?
The last time, it was comprehensive, it took months.
I mean, look, we, we do need to fast track as much as we can. I think given the presentation on Monday from proper strategies, that'll really, I think, kickstart. I mean, there's no reason why we probably can't send out an email right away.
We can ask them for timelines.
But to your, but I guess to looking further down here, when you start talking about levy and bond issues and, you know, recognizing where we are currently in our capacity, where we could end up being in capacity in the near future. And the timeline that it's going to take, once you get the study done, and then you actually decide if you're going to do, if you're going to do a building, what's that going to look like, what's that going to cost? The time to get on the ballot for something like that in order to get something built, you're talking about
Three years.
Three years, yeah, exactly.
So if we, you know, if we Plus you got to staff the buildings, you got to work manfully by your operations.
But keep in mind, I know there's been some talk about potentially this year. To be on the, this year's November ballot, we would have to have the resolution necessity and to proceed approved by the end of July. So in order to do that, you have to know what you're building, how big is it going to be? What are, how are we staffing it, administrative costs, operating costs, you'd have to have all of that information.
You could, well, if it was just an operating, you could do that and then
It seemed to me that if you know you need an operating levy, you don't need a bond issue. You're probably, because in order for you to have a bond issue passed, you have to be able to, you have to be able to sell to the public what they're buying.
Sure, absolutely.
You have to be pretty far along in your preliminary design phase before they're going to say yes, right? And you've got a lot of work to do to find out what they want, because you want to give them what they want, so they do a need.
And without the building, we don't need an operating levy right now. So we're not going to go out and ask for an operating
Yeah, so the question is, is that you just got to keep that timing, right? But just make sure it's clear to the public that, you know, look, we're going to do a bond issue first, but with that on its heels, it's probably an operating levy the year that it opens.
Yeah, at least. I mean, if we can, it's probably better to do behind the operating if we know what that is.
Same, which is what we did last time. Yeah, it's just, I mean, I get, I get your point, Paul. I still, I don't see how you can get it done on time to be on the ballot this year, if that's what you wanted. So then you're looking at a minimum of being next year, which would be
You don't want to let that money until the next
Your special election. You could, and then you, but again, you're looking at, you know, if you do the timeline right, you're looking at twenty seven, twenty eight of a building being opened.
But that would be driven based upon the data of what residential growth is coming online when? That's going to impact our current capacity. So we'd have to understand that as well. So I mean, we're not building a building for the sake of building the building. I mean, we're building a building for the growth that's going to take place within the community. So when is that, when is that coming online? And how much can we absorb until X point on the campus currently for the space that we have existing? And then when does it become a point where we can't do that? And to your point, working backwards, minimum for construction, even on expedited timeline, I mean, it's two years. And that's a very aggressive and it costs a lot more money. So we would want not to have to do that per se, because I don't think we're under the same situation we were when the building was built originally as the K through twelve learning center back in 2013, because there are mobile traders on campus. We're not in that crisis mode. So this was, I think we have, we're in the driver's seat to be planful about how we do this based upon all of the information that comes forward over the course of whatever's going to happen in the next six plus months. To tell us that information, to confirm it. Monday nights started that cooperative, information with cooperative strategies based upon the study that they've done and the information we've seen, it's going to forecast the next ten years in this community.
Is there any way to work kind of parallel where we've got the master plan going on, but we have a facilities group? Let's say we know we need a building.
Yeah, we could talk about the pedagogical stuff, because, I mean, we have this conversation, but like, like right now at the ELC, because we took over programming for preschool and we've expanded to all day K. I mean, preschool's not required within the school district, short of students with special needs that have to have access to programming when they turn three years old and typically developing years to support that. Half-day kindergarten is the standard under state statute. We offer full day K, because we want the educational benefit of what happens programmatically to benefit the student pedagogically and the longitudinal growth of their career in the school district. We have a proven product, it's second successful. But we're landlocked right now at the ELC. I'm at ninety nine percent capacity. I've used every available space and we end up with waiting lists, because we're in that process right now. I'll choose preschool, because it just happened. So we had fifty seats available for all-day preschool. It's a tuition-based program, short of students with special needs. That's a statutory requirement. We had fifty seats available for families to register for all-day K. We have fifty-six students currently on a waitlist for all, for preschool, for preschool. So the fifty filled within thirty minutes online, they were gone. And there were fifty-six on a waitlist in the next
All-day preschool?
All-day preschool.
Well, you're probably charging, it's probably a steal.
But it's, it's an incredible educational opportunity programmatically, so I would argue. It does. I would argue, I would argue as an educator, we want our children to have access to that. I don't have any more rooms at the ELC, because like, that would be, we could add more preschool units tomorrow. My problem is, I don't have anywhere to put them. So I can't add them. So those fifty-six fans that said, I will pay tuition for my child to come to your program. They want the product, because of the educational value it's demonstrating of what we're doing. I can't give access, because I don't have space.
So we would benefit from a building today sitting on our
Well, I guess, that's the question.
Yeah, so
There's other things that it could do to give me more space, because it's the same situation on all-day kindergarten. We've expanded all-day kindergarten every year since it's open. This will be the year that there's no more space to expand to. So if there's a waitlist, legitimately, those people are not getting all-day kindergarten unless someone withdraws from all-day K.
Part of the discussion about facilities needs to also, we have to understand that we have this thing out here, cooperative strategy saying X number of students. But if you continue to expand these classes, the all-day K classes, it's on top of. So I need even more space.
Which we would be very interested in looking at, because of the educational benefit to children.
And your preschool probably pays for itself, doesn't it? I mean, it's probably a zero cost.
Preschool is self-sustaining, because we have a statutory requirement for students with special needs and kindergarten is as well. But it's not enough, that's where Becky's going, because it's not required, we're choosing. Is that a reason that we want to build it? And alone, it probably is not for Joe taxpayer, because sixty percent of our community does not have a child in our school, round numbers. So that's not a required element that you have to do educationally. Programmatically, I can argue with you as to all the benefits of what it does and the student's trajectory for education. But it's not a requirement.
On topic, but maybe off topic, so the, the all-day K. Are, are the people who are trying to register for all-day K who are on a waitlist, then just have to send their kids to the half-day?
They, they will go to half-day unless they choose to go somewhere else to basically get all-day kindergarten and then come back to us as first graders.
And if there's enough of a waitlist to create another all-day K classroom of kids who would be half-day?
It could, it will
Other house.
It could, it depends on the numbers. So a half-day could get eliminated, or two half-days would get eliminated to create a full day, that's the challenge. We end up with an imbalance that we normally have, but we've taken, it does happen, but in the math problem, it normally won't work with the current, I don't have any space left. Our issue right now is space, we've taken over every space possible.
Because you basically would need two room, two all-day K rooms for one half-day K room.
And there are too many half-day Ks to combine for just one all-day K. So you're not able to get rid of, you know, I mean, you can't say it with these two classes, because there's more than
Right, we have not registered for all-day kindergarten yet, so I don't know what the waitlist this year will be. But last year, based upon the waitlist, we added two additional sections.
Yeah, people camping out.
It's, it, it, it's, I'm telling you, because we advertise everything and parents are waiting at the computer to make it happen. And then there's even lottery provisions on all-day K, because we have a lottery process that was created as well to be fair, so that we actually go through this process. But it's just, it's, it's intense. It's a wonderful problem to have though, because it demonstrates the quality of the education we're providing and what parents want.
You just need someone to donate a bunch of money to build an early childhood center.
We need to just, we probably need to start the process of getting the, the campus master plan updated.
That's where we would recommend we begin, and that's why when we had the conversation with Debbie for prep today, I said I would bring up, she put the consultation question on for me, because I believe we need to pursue a consultant, an architectural firm or whatever they're going to be. But someone that's in this world to come in and update that information for the school district, so that's something we believe needs to happen. So Becky and I will craft that initial supposal of what we're seeking, that would go out in email. And we'll send it to the world and give them a deadline. And, and it'll include, because I, Paul made a comment and I heard it, we need this done yesterday. So we will ask them, that'll be part of our proposal or supposal, we ask from them in their proposal, what's the timeline to do that work? Because I think that will matter in who we select.
And then for the athletic piece of it, I mean, you've been a lot more involved in athletics than I have. But I would think it's one thing to have someone, have some entity that's focused on a master plan from a educational facilities perspective, but I don't know if there are any you know, athletic specific type firms out there that would be Yeah.
Sure. As a threshold, wouldn't we want to be determining the impact of what, a building decision?
Yes, at the same time, we could do the audit of the existing facilities and their infrastructure, their livelihood, their lifecycle.
Most of these architect firms are going to be firms that have specialized in education. So they're, they're more than qualified to deal with the athletics portion of it too, once they get the input.
Sure, sure, sure. I was just wondering if maybe it would make sense to have a, a more athletic focused. So if you're going to go out and go for two, get one that's education focused and one that's, and see what they come up with.
I think that could be part of our email that we sent to them, that if they have a specialization then, or if they only want to do the academic side, then say that. But if you have people on your staff that you think you have the depth on your bench in that firm to do both, tell us why.
So the, the people who would do the master plan, they, they will assess our facilities, but then we would go on to other consultants to do the work of
I think it's the same.
Oh, you do, okay. So like, what, what is the facility now?
Right, I think that's where they go next, based upon the vision of the information we can provide. What else do you want to do programmatically? So are we interested in expanding all-day preschool? Are we expanding all-day kindergarten? Are we interested in other opportunities academically for kids? Do I need a new robotics facility? Do I need a new arts building? Like what are, like what, what's deficient, it'd be part of their assessment? What's deficient in our current reality, if anything? And where do you want to go next, based upon what you envision this to become? And then in addition to that, here's what's happening residentially that you have to also come up with a solution for.
So you feel like they would, they would make, they might say, you know, if you want all-day kindergarten, you're going to need this much classroom space if you're going to go preschool. And, you know, based on the amount of residency increases you're going to have, you're going to need a building of X, Y, Z square foot. They're not going to design the building yet, they're just going to tell you, this is what you need.
It's master planning is what it is.
I, I feel like there's no way to really speed this up.
Well, we just get it started, see how, see how, yeah, it's good going. I, you know, we also would need to make sure that these folks probably do have some conversation on like proper strategies with city. Because if there is opportunity for areas in and around the campus.
Different types of shared facilities. And it benefits us.
And it benefits.
Community.
Right.
On the finance piece for Jen and Paul, um. I think we should go ahead and get going on the F R R C and building that back up.
Yeah, we have two members that um, come. To pretty much follow the meetings that we have, but we have several couple that have resigned from and one I haven't heard from. So we need three.
And that's a public process. Where you would interview and and select candidates. Um, and and can you explain the role of the F R R C?
So it was originally created to be, it's called the Financial Review and Reporting Committee. So their their charge is to. Look at finances. They would, you know, the levy, the operating, that kind of stuff. They'll look at that stuff. And then they report back to the board. So they're not recommending. They're reviewing, um, and then they're reporting back to the board. This is what it is, but they don't. In the history since I've been in the district, they don't say, yes, we need a levy. The levy needs to be for this amount. Mike one, I would bring that information to them. They would look at it, review it, decide. Is it, does it make sense? Do we feel like it's, you know, these are good assumptions? Yeah.
Okay.
Um, and right now we've only been having uh, two meetings a year when we were able to have them when we have a quorum.
So the conversation Becky and I had at where Debbie just went, we would recommend to the Board of Education that you uh, go through a public process for advertisement to provide public notice. Send communications to our parents, ask the city to also partner with us to send it out through their. Um, distribution list because their distribution list is different than our distribution list. But to publicly advertise um, for replacements and seek resumes. That's typically what we ask for. With answers to maybe a couple of questions that we normally pose as to why are you interested in work with your background in finance? But we can work with Mrs. Fuller, Mr. Newmoff to finalize that. I'm just going to call it application process. Um, that we can give to you and then you can review that and tell us what else you would like it to include, if anything, what amendments or changes you want to make to it. And then we get that out because we would like to have, we've scheduled it based upon the org meeting. Um, but for meeting in April, so we have time to get through this public process to have those people appointed um, for the April meeting.
That's also the the timing too is because of the five year forecast.
Okay.
Um, and they would normally review that. Since I've been in the district, um, that's not been the process. The finance committee was in place when I got here, so I don't know what process the board used prior to me coming. I presume it was something like that. Um, but then whenever we've had openings, um, usually other finance committee members would suggest someone and it would just, you know, come back. So we haven't done this process since I've been in the district.
So that's our question to you. We need to know, do you want to go through the, are we recommending the application process to seek participation is what we're suggesting? Versus an appointment where you just pick people to serve that might have approached you and have a passion for finance. Um, we need to know what you want.
I think it'd be good to have it public. A wider.
Yeah, I think let's go find some great people. Let's do it as quick as we can. I guess you mentioned here the rechartering. Do you feel like we need to recharter anything relative to purpose? I think it fits within the confines of, at least the immediate need to get behind. Quantifying and getting people educated on what's going to be needed and how it all shakes out.
Yeah, I don't think it needs rechartered. I I think you'll get more applicants by it not being like a recommending or a. Um, or they're taking ownership of, do you need a levy? I mean, we're going to ask that opinion, obviously. Um, get their input and their feedback, but I think you'll get more people that they don't have that responsibility.
So timeline wise, you don't need anything from Mrs. Fuller or myself, just to, but we're going to get that.
We have to give you things, so we'll produce that and give it to you for review purposes as the co-chairs of the committee. Uh, so that you can tell us what else Debbie would see it obviously as for president and we can share the information before we go public with everyone. But we'll start with the two of you since you're the co-chairs of the committee, if that's acceptable.
I think a question for the board is, are you comfortable with um, Jen and Paul? Making the recommendation of who or do you all want to be part of those interviews?
We're like, no.
We have to know logistically what the.
Um. So I think a couple of things in terms of Manning managing the messaging publicly. Uh, maybe. Once we start working on this, we almost like board liaison reports, maybe we add something on the agenda of our board meetings. Maybe every other board meeting to say or committee update. Just so we keep it, you know, as as. As much as we can share publicly, we do. And then um. Michael and I had discussed the whole, you know, engaging a P R firm. And I almost think we should do that soon, just to kind of lay out. I mean, I don't know. I I'm opening it for discussion, but I think once we have the cooperative strategies presentation. Um. We want to talk about, hey, um, here's how we're responding now to all the information we have. We are creating these committees. We um. We are going to engage a consultant for um, to update our master plan. I I don't know, is that, is is it time to engage a P R firm or? You know, what's the ideal timing to start really cranking up our messaging to the community around? All the stuff we're looking at and what's coming and the work that we're doing.
My only caveat is that a P R firm cannot be talking about levies and when we need a levy or any of that stuff. We can't pay for that.
Yeah, all they can do is um, I just factually identify what you're doing and what your current status of your facilities are. They couldn't. Can't do anything to advocate for a passage. Do we feel like we need an outside entity to do that?
I I think given some of the. From my perspective, I think there's an advantage of, even if it's a block of hours with a third party consultant forum related to communications and marketing. It's someone else that's not in the trenches of the day to day, understanding what's going on in the school district to give us neutral third party. When you look at this as a communications expert, what works for you, what doesn't, what speaks to you, what doesn't, what's the messaging you get out of it? Are we telling our story the right way? Is it being used? To basically frame the conversation in my world, tell it first, tell it fast, tell it often in a very succinct way. That's going to um, resonate with people. Um, so although we have internal communications, because it's boots on the ground, day to day ops stuff. I don't know that their background and expertise and their responsibilities. Fit that the same way as to where I'm looking for the neutral perspective to give us direct feedback. And we can create things internally clearly, but I'd like someone to review that from that world. That could give us different levels of feedback. And again, I would go the same process, much like we're talking about with. The master planning piece and seeking an architectural firm or whomever to come and do that work. There's a book of business related communications and marketing and we could put that back out on the street and I believe people would come and basically say, I'm interested in doing that. And finding out, well, what are my options? Is it, you know, I have to purchase a contract or can I purchase out of work? Can I get a block of hours? Like, what are my choices? Um, just to give me access to that in a different way.
I was curious, I I'm not, I'm not opposed to it for sure, but I just. Want to make sure that it's, I I mean, we, so we, this would not be.
Yeah, I'm not looking for a long term retainer for a P R marketing firm. We have a communications department and we do pretty well. But I know like through cooperative strategies, facility planning, you know, back to where Debbie went with master planning and athletics and all and you know, whatever. Anything but a levy and a bond issue, you can't touch that because that's separation. But I know, how do we frame that story and where is it accessible and how are we telling it? You know, what is the social media presence, if any? What's the written word piece? What's the newsletter? What's the video? What's the, what is that? That best frames this conversation with their level of expertise giving us that feedback.
The other thing to keep in mind is that none of these consulting services have been budgeted. They're not in the forecast. I don't know what the cost will be, so just an FYI. It won't blow the five year forecast, but just know.
But we would want to know what's the responsible amount that we would be willing to invest in that based upon what I just described. And we would outline a scope clearly. I mean, we've thought about this and had conversations with Debbie. Um, as board president, but outline a scope and then define that, let you give reactions to it and then go seek it and see what do we get back? I don't know. I mean, it could come back astronomically. We'd say, well, we'll figure out how to do this ourselves. But I still think there's a level of expertise that would benefit us um, to have that third party perspective.
Is everyone in agreement with that?
Uh, seek it out like a, yeah, I would want to see a cost benefit, you know, and so without knowing what that is and what you get in return. Given these caveats where there may be a lot of messaging that's need there and would it be better to go like a focus group, you know, those kind of things? People could guess what the community wants, but maybe the community could just tell us also. So there's, you know, weighing all of those things versus the professionalism and their level of expertise. So I think without knowing the scope and the cost of that.
Yeah.
I would generally agree with everything Jen said, but I'd also say um. Given the complexity of what we're going forward with, this is a. In my view, like the biggest thing happening, these are big decisions for the community to make and we take it outside of, as we can't talk about levy and all that, but these are. Big decisions on facilities, on athletics, on buildings, on. What's happening in our community and I think having that second set of eyes, an independent party who's not in the trenches, who's not. One of the five of us board members working on committees or yourself with many other responsibilities, just to make sure that we're. Uh, writing communications that are thinking about all the stakeholders who we have. Uh, interest in this going forward. And I think with the speed that we need to operate, having someone who's waking up every day as part of their. Block of hours or every wind of contracting for it uh, to help us keep on track. I mean, I, it's important.
So it sounds like there's two things we could start. We could. Look at um, would it be an R F P for?
We'll do a scope. We don't have to do an R F P because Bill said we can just send emails and ask for people to submit proposals based upon the scope that we would define. So we'll define a scope related to facilities, both academic and athletic, and a scope related to publications, marketing, communication. Um, and we can basically go back and forth, but we can come up with the initial drafts of that to share.
Is there anything else we should be thinking of right away out of the gate?
We know, I'm going back to your question earlier on timing. I mean, I feel maybe I'm, I may be alone in this. I feel like this has to happen yesterday. And this has been national news, it's been local news. I know all through the fall with the election, it was common question of like, what's happening? Is there a plan? And and I feel like um, it's unfortunate it'd be a six month window. We'd have to get. In a position to be on the ballot. I'd like to think we could get it done in six months because otherwise we're not talking about this till next March. At the earliest and we just talked about, we could probably use buildings now if we have them and we're two to three year construction window. Um, so that might feel aggressive. It'd be my personal view that I would advocate. We try to. Put a timeline together that we at least aim for uh, end of July, be able to make a decision. If we have to, and I guess even if we make a decision on numbers at that point. Uh, we still have time between then and the election to develop the narrative and the discussion. But otherwise I think we're pushed out fifteen months and that doesn't feel. Feels like it's way, it's too far out. Do we think that's achievable?
I don't know.
I think. Go ahead.
Uh, I'm only aware of this because as part of our uh, parent committee on belonging, there's a lot of things that get done in the administration in this second half of the year. That pick up a lot of time and uh, matters.
It is.
Yeah.
Well, I don't even know if you hired an architect firm yesterday, I think it has. By by July.
Well.
I disagree with that.
I mean, maybe. Usually that that design phase is like almost twelve months.
Well, so it wouldn't have a design. So the last um, the the last building, intermediate, the district passed a budget.
Yeah.
Now, that was. Difficult because there was no idea what the building was going to house. I think if we had some idea of what the building will house, then. You'd be within a, but you can kind of like, oh, this is the kind of building.
You have a better budget.
Because a high school is going to be far more expensive to build than an elementary. Or a middle.
I don't know if it's instructive, uh, but you know, the Parks District when they passed their indoor facility by thirty-six votes. One of the big issues is what are we voting for?
Yeah.
Right?
It goes back to this story. That is narrative story. It's the narrative.
I think you can pass a budget. I think it would just be helpful to know, is it an elementary that I'm voting on? Is it a middle or is it a high? And then we know and can recommend, here's how much money we think this building is going to cost. Because the last thing we want to do is say, let's pass a fifty million dollar budget. And that only gets you a middle school, but we needed a high school, you know?
But don't we have a history with what we've done with our restructuring the buildings where we've actually successfully. Gone from middle school that has three grades and we went from two to eight to the intermediate. So I think there's a trust in the community that if. The administration feels like we could build X for X budget.
Yeah.
We can make the numbers work.
But to your point, the uh, the intermediate. School was built as a.
A twelve.
Yeah. So it it was supposed to be a flex space building for future growth to meet all the needs of the school district. And then we changed that um, pedagogically to come up with a different pathway. Of how we could better meet the needs of kids and we went through an entire reconfiguration process to decide which grade levels would go where. That's going to have to happen again um, to determine the end result of what do we need? Pedagogically, the best meet the needs of kids because I don't know, when you look at the campus. Um, it's unlikely that we're building at the secondary side of the house. I mean, just sitting here on top of my head, I don't think that'll happen. Um, I do believe it's more elementary like the question becomes, what are the grade level configurations using our existing space that could better meet the needs of kids than result in? Here's the grade level configuration. I need a new building to meet the needs of the kids. And at the same time, let's talk about, well, what are we keeping? What's changing? What's proving upon? What are we adding? To best meet the needs of those kids as we look towards the next twenty years.
Right.
I don't know if that could be accomplished in six months. We could try, but I I don't know that sitting here. I can't, I I have to sit down and figure that out, but I mean, and. See what support and help we can get from these experts to find out what's practical.
Becky, is the the variation in cost on the building, whether it's K, elementary, intermediate, middle, high school? All about the interior fit out of it? The box is the box, but then you're.
There were, so I reached out to Olin Tangi and I don't have the numbers committed to memory because I just got them last week to see what they're getting in the way of um. Per square costs for the buildings.
They're on the ballot.
They're on the ballot, but they build buildings every year.
Apparently.
Not all in one year. Um, so I do have what their last up, well, the elementary that they just accepted bids for. Um, was an eighty-three thousand square foot building for twenty-four point four million, just the construction costs. And then when you add in technology, textbook supplies, it was thirty furniture, it was thirty-two million dollars.
Isn't there a, I think to your question, there's like a square footage per.
That's what I calculated. I don't have it committed to memory.
But I mean, it's square footage changes by little kid, big kid, right?
Yes, it's changes and the Ohio School Facilities Commission number isn't necessarily the New Albany standard number. So I'm just going to say that. And then in today's age, because of the thing called current construction costs and labor costs. It's not the same as when we built the intermediate school.
I would also say that um, Olin Tangi builds basically cookie cutter buildings. So they're not going through the design. They've built them before, so they have that level of um, efficiency. We don't build buildings all the time. It wouldn't be a cookie cutter building, so our costs could be. A little higher than what theirs are just because of some of those other things, but I, we won't, we wouldn't know that necessarily until we get some kind of an estimate from the consultant or we bid the building.
And you get like, they have like general, like cost per square foot for a high school is this and then it's kind of like in the. The real estate market, if it's A office space, supposed to be office spaces, C office space, and there's a cost per foot. Based on what kind of building you're building.
And we can find out who else is currently in construction just by talking to architects because we can contact those school designers just like you did with Olin Tangi. And then find out, well, what are you building? What's the configuration? What are the grade levels in it? What's the cost for construction? What's the cost with everything in? Because you have to then, to Mark's point, the box of thing called school, that's fine, but you got to put everything in it. So then there's costs associated with that. And that's not the staffing cost. That's just the operational cost of putting things in it to make the school.
So to answer. Sorry.
Yeah, Indian Hill is building right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they might.
But there's other schools across the state that we could get current numbers on, just to understand, because I don't think the price is the same as to when we built the intermediate school. Because of today's costs.
Right.
I think everything has been escalated.
They have. Um, I will say that Olin Tangi uh, gave me, I forget the first number for the elementary seventeen that they. Just bid in December of twenty-two. They just got back the current elementary eighteen and it was slightly lower than their twenty-two. So he does believe that the market is kind of settling, but to answer your question, there are three different. Uh, based on their numbers, there are three different uh, costs, square foot costs.
Elementary is not the same price as middle school, which is not the same price as high school. High school is the most. Elementary is not the same price as middle school, which is not the same price as high school. High school is the most expensive. And I don't think that's currently where we will be. I do not.
Part of the analysis, but also include potential for additions or thinking that there's like a small amount of supplementary like.
Could we add a, we, a DLC, like what would that cost? Like, you know, what are the pros and the cons? What are we stopping? So it goes back to the giant jigsaw puzzle of how do you do it? What's the most physically responsible way? Here's where we want to be and this is everything we want to accomplish. How can we do that? What are our options?
I mean, we have talked even internally, just do, can we add a floor to one of the buildings? But what we don't know is were they built structurally to support another floor?
I don't know.
And what are A or B?
I don't know that.
I don't think so, because the intermediate, we had to bury.
Yeah.
The trim so that it wasn't too high.
Because there's an eighteen-foot drop from the primary school that had to be proportionally the same line when it looks at the roof height to get to the high school. So that's why Jefferson has the decline. So those roof lines, if you're up in a drone or standing somewhere, we can actually see the campus, they align. That was a requirement.
And yes, all of that would, would be part of all of that.
We would need all of that to look at what are all of our options?
Got a little bit of work to do.
But that's, we can do it.
Yeah.
I, for some reason, perhaps demented, think this is kind of exciting stuff.
This is fun in a sick way.
Good, good. It is fun. It's exciting. All right. Anything else, guys? On this topic? Um, well, we will certainly continue that discussion. Um, okay, that brings us to a German. May I have a motion in a second? Mr. Wilson and Mr. Newmoff. Ms. Jenkins, please call the roll.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Vice President Newmoff.
Yes.
Mrs. Fuller, yes. Mr. Fallon?
Yes.
Yes, and the motion carries. Our next meeting is on Monday, January twenty-second at this location at five thirty P M. Thank you, everyone, for a whole half Saturday, maybe three quarters now.
Appreciate Bill's presentation.